What I should have done is, you think you can make me cry now?
Okay, we're gonna open the October 30th Board of Selectmen meeting at 6:30. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have resident comment by Mike Dempsey and Vanessa Lopez.
Good evening, Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptec Road, Groveland, member of the Groveland Conservation Commission. And VZ Park is one of our properties in town. And we're having our 12th annual Wine and Art. And I thought it would be worthwhile to come and tell you a little bit about, we're doing a little bit different. You may have noticed the signs say Art Festival, because we are expanding the wine and art and trying to do things just a little bit differently this year. So I'm gonna have Vanessa Lopez and Carol Funch, who both work up at VZ Park, to explain what's going on.
Can we push when we talk?
No, it's already on.
It's already on?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I haven't done this in a really long time. So anyhow, I'm Vanessa Lopez.
I'm Carol Funch.
And I do the event coordinating at VZ, been doing it for a couple of years now. Hello. And I think most people know about us, but just in case anybody watching doesn't, you know, we're on Washington Street, 201 Washington Street. We're a 48-acre park conservation land with trails that are open to the public year-round during the day. We also have a 15,000-square-foot building that rents out for all kinds of events, everything from the Girl Scouts to full-venue weddings. So on November 4th, we have our annual wine reception. We're going into our 12th year. Committee starts planning for this in the spring, so it's a pretty big event. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year. We work really hard to pull it off. Everybody does this for free, you know, lots of great committee members work to pull this off. So the wine reception this year is gonna stay the same. Your $30 ticket includes wine, hors d'oeuvres. We have entertainment, so we've got a great musical act. We have raffles, that's a crowd favorite, everybody loves the raffles. What else do we have? And of course, art for sale. A portion of the proceeds goes to VZ Park, that's a good chunk of our fundraising as well. So we hope people come and have fun and buy art and get raffles and do all that good stuff. Yeah, we had a really special raffle donated this year by Wire, by Ryan Kelly. He does Wire by Ryan. He actually, we commissioned a tree for us with a rock. I should have brought it tonight, but it's a rock from the park. It's a wire tree of our signature oak tree that sits on the hill. And we'll be raffling that off as well. He donated to us so that we could get some proceeds from that as well. So it's a pretty, pretty special thing. But because it's so much work for three hours, we decided to extend it to Sunday so that we can include families and people of all ages the next day, give us another chance to sell a little bit more art. But then there's gonna be a lot of other fun stuff going on, so I'll let Carol tell you about it.
Yeah, so it's gonna give the artists more exposure. And we're hoping to get a lot more children to come in and get inspired and just participate in the whole event. Because, because it's family-friendly, we didn't get the liquor license for the second day. That's why we changed the name to Art Festival, to kind of have it all under one umbrella. We're calling it Art Interactive, because we want people to participate. We've got a scavenger hunt, we're gonna have, hopefully people will do, go through as families through there. A lot of activities hosted by Tree Top Summer Camp. And they ran a great camp at VZ over this past summer. We're gonna have a wire lesson by Ryan Kelly, sponsored by Tree Top Summer Camp. And that is gonna be all ages, right? That's not just for kids, that's, anybody can do that, so I'm looking forward to that. We're gonna have, we're gonna have story reading by Michelle Denalp. The One Tail at a Time puppies are gonna be there. The One Tail at a Time rescue uses part of Lucille's cottage at VZ to quarantine their dogs from out of state. And then they go, they stay in foster homes to be paired up with families. We're gonna have nitrogen ice cream, which is really exciting. That's, what is that? It's nitrogen gas, like all of these ice cream. It's just gonna be, it's gonna be exciting. And we're gonna have food for sale. So we're really hoping that we just get people coming out, just seeing what the park is about, getting to really enjoy the art experience. It's gonna be fun.
Yeah, support your park.
What are the hours again?
So the Saturday is 6 to 9. The reception is 6 to 9 on November 4th, and on November 5th, it's 11 to 4.
And Vanessa was kind enough to bring you all invitations, which you should all have in front of you.
You guys are all welcome.
Great, thank you.
And if you wanna buy tickets, Vanessa will be here for a little while, so hurry on down to Town Hall. And she can get you some tickets, or you can buy them online, which is the easiest way to do it, at vzpark.org.
So Mike, just as a comment from the last meeting.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil and I had volunteered to pay the police detail for Saturday night.
Yes.
Apparently, we cannot make such gestures. So we donated money to the VZ Park facility, so you guys can use it as you just need.
Right, and plus you donate to the Friends of VZ, which is a separate organization.
Yes, so we can't give you money for a police detail, but we can donate money for you to use it as you need.
Okay, and we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Are you featuring a lot of local artists in this?
Yes, all local artists.
And will there, are art be for sale?
Yes, there will be, on both days.
Okay, that's cool. And on the Sunday, the family day, are there any kind of interactive activities for the children to, you know, get in and start painting and, you know, get into that?
Absolutely, lots of activities.
Good, good.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mike, tickets available at the door also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There are 35 at the door, 30 in advance.
Bill, you're set?
It's kind of a little sideline, but not that far off. How are you doing? I know I met you before, and how's things going as far as rentals and the events? Do you think you're online?
Things are moving, we are really busy right now. In fact, it's sad, because some of our regular people now have to book in advance. So hopefully, that continues on into the spring. That's our most difficult time of year, it was a little bit after winter, but if you want a room at VZ Park in November or December, it might not happen.
And have you got any new ideas coming up? Any kind of changes that you, other than this? I mean, any new ideas come online to try and promote the property?
Oh, for sure, yeah, we, I mean, we do, we've done a lot of different things. We spruced up our website. I got a friend of mine, he does all kinds of web design, so we updated that. That was a huge ordeal, definitely not something I could have done on my own. So, and we've also paired up with the Essex Heritage Area. They do the Trails and Sales. We're gonna do an Art Week, hopefully this spring as well. So we are trying to expand on what events we have going on, but we have a lot of other new events that have come on board. This past year, our summer camp would have been the biggest one, the most notable one. They were there six weeks, and they're coming back this year, this 2018, to do another summer camp, so.
Back in the fall, we were talking to the state legislations and what have you, and a lot of towns do these farmers markets.
Uh-huh.
And they, like Deambis and other towns, and people come in from all over the state to do these farmers market.
Uh-huh.
Might be something looking to for Groveland, because they're trying to find places to go, and it's a, it's a big state thing, where it's on the state, you know, provides the bookings and all that kind of stuff from the towns, and yeah.
We're open to everything, we're definitely, you know, open to find.
And you actually get money from, I guess, from the, you know, it's not a lot, maybe the vendors give like $10 a table or something, but I'm sure it would at least help promote that property as well.
Yeah, anything, anything that gets us, you know, on the map.
Right.
Sounds good.
Bill, you're set? Lisa, you have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to the warrants. I'll read the warrants. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-17 in the amount of $161,731. You got a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-17 in the amount of $443,571.41. You get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What's the largest contributing factor to that number?
The light department at $320,000.
That's the largest?
Yes, it is.
Anybody else?
And is that just their quarterly payment?
No, 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 this is their actual bills, it's not our bills to them.
Oh.
Bill?
Yep, yep.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Yes.
Moving on to discussion, well, we don't have any appointments. Moving on to discussion and possible vote, conservation restriction for 150 Center Street with Mike Dempsey and Chris LaPointe from Essex County Greenbelt.
Okay, thank you again. So we are here after a pretty long process to hopefully do the final step on the conservation restriction at 150 Center Street. So just to remind you, this is two of the three properties on Center Street that we purchased back in 2014 and 2015. These two particular properties were purchased with grants plus CPA funds, so they require a conservation restriction on them. And I'll let Chris say exactly what a conservation restriction is, because I think he can probably do a better job with it than I can, because he deals with these every day. And so Essex County Greenbelt, who Chris works for, is the agency that is gonna hold the conservation restriction. And the conservation restriction, you've seen it, you know, it has a lot of discussion about things that can and can't be done with the property. I think I said last time that, you know, this is a very tricky one, and to pull off primarily because we're allowing exploration and well placement, at least two-well potentially placement on the property, because the properties sit on top of the aquifers, right next to our current well area. So the water department has worked closely with us, we appreciated their input, and then it's gone all through the state. The other tricky part of it, there's a couple of tricky, other tricky things, you know, it's turtle habitat, and so natural heritage has a big say in how we use the land. And then finally, you know, we're wrapping up on that gravel removal process on the former Mattingly piece. So it was, all had to be baked into that conservation restriction. So I'm gonna let Chris answer the question of what a conservation is, restriction is. And I did send a email to Denise last week about the three questions that you had. But first, I'm gonna let Chris say, tell us what a conservation restriction is.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you again to the board. For the record, my name is Chris LaPointe. I'm the Director of Land Conservation with Essex County Greenbelt Association. Very briefly, a conservation restriction, which is a requirement of your use of CPA funds to partially acquire these parcels, is a permanent restriction that's authorized under the Mass General laws. It's held by a third party, so the town couldn't hold a restriction over its own property. The town is the landowner. And another entity, a qualifying organization, it could be the state government, it could be the federal government. In this case, it's Essex County Greenbelt as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit land trust that is authorized to hold a conservation restriction over this land. So we are willing to do that, we're glad to be partners with the town in this effort. Mike did a good job giving the overview. This is an unusually complicated site. You have the overlay of the funding source, sources that the town used, the water department money, CPA funds, Land and Water Conservation Fund grants, the fact that there's an ongoing gravel removal operation happening, the ability to install, to look for, and then potentially install well heads, and the rare species habitat. All of that in the stew together, if you will, it makes us a more complicated process than most, and a more complicated restriction than most. There were a number of questions, and we can, we can get to the questions that you had, but there are a number of places where the restriction is perhaps even more restrictive than Greenbelt would normally care for. Things like bicycles, and that's a, that's a requirement from the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife by virtue of the fact that there's rare species habitat out there. So I think, again, not to gloss this too much, but there are a number of different interests and different sort of complicated factors on this one that might raise some questions. So I'm happy to stop there and answer any questions that you guys have. It's been a little while since I've been here.
Yeah, I have just one kind of question comment. I'm looking at the questions that were, I guess, asked of Mike at the last meeting, which he responded the answers to. So maybe with your recent comments, an easier question is, what can we use that land for? I know we bought it under certain guidelines, but what are we permitted to do with it, if anything?
Right, so you can allow public access for fishing, hiking, horseback riding, cross-country skiing, picnicking, other non-motorized recreational activities that don't degrade the landscape. You can manage for non-native or invasive plants. You can conduct wildlife habitat management with the approval of the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. You can mark clear mow, maintain footpaths and woods roads. With the approval of Greenbelt and the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, you can make new trails. You can erect certain types of signs. You have broad rights in paragraph seven to do drinking water supply exploration, and if those, if the results of that exploration were positive, you could, in number eight, install temporary access ways. You could install under paragraph nine, drinking water supply infrastructure as you need. There is paragraph 10, which addresses the earth removal permit, which is essentially a pre-existing condition.
Yeah.
You have a right for, to alter and adjust the existing sewer easement that's out there. You have the ability to collect groundwater samples and monitor and maintain the monitoring wells for the superfund groundwater monitoring that's happening out there.
Really, my question was from the beneficial of the residents of the town.
Right.
What are they gonna be able to see as a use case for it? I mean, the water, the aquifer is great, I mean, making sure the aquifer is clean and undisturbed, great.
Yeah.
But it seems like there's an awful lot of restrictions on what the town people are actually gonna be able to use that for when they purchased it. It's more of a comment than anything else. I'm sure the other board members have more pertaining questions that might dive down a little bit deeper. But I think that that's, one of my concerns is that, you know, there's a lot of restrictions on this. And not everybody has horses.
That's a fair point. I guess what I would say is, you know, the land will be permanently protected for drinking water supply protection and for passive outdoor recreational purposes.
Ed, you have?
And just to make, to make one other comment, again, a lot of the particular, particularly restrictive aspects of this, I'm happy to take these questions, they're not necessarily all coming from Greenbelt. There's a, the State Department of Fish and Game, Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, by virtue of the turtle habitat, is a signatory to the restriction, and had most to say about what the restrictions would be out there. So I hear your concern, but I think, again, the fact that there is the broad, you know, broad latitude to do water exploration and sort of installation of drinking water wells, the fact that that, that land protects a major potential drinking water source for the town, and the fact that the town's people can use it for passive recreational purposes, you know, not perhaps every one of the range of recreational activities that exist.
Mm-hmm.
So I hear your point, but.
Ed?
Yeah, a couple of points. Can you explain the restriction on bicycles? And what, and I have a hard time with this. I just can't imagine a youngster going through there on a bicycle is going to do more damage than horses or even the 10-wheel dump trucks that we have hauling gravel out of there now. Now, won't they do, aren't they doing it to the sensitive areas? They certainly could be, and they're certainly not sifting every shovel full of dirt to make sure they're not transporting some of the turtles out of the area. And so the dump trucks that are coming out of there are certainly gonna do more damage than a youngster on a bicycle. The second thing is with the turtle habitat. Turtles have been around for hundreds of years. They've existed without our intervention. And sometimes when man intercepts the ecosystem, we screw it up. So isn't this possibility of following up the ecosystem if man gets involved in this? And again, maybe you can explain the bicycles as opposed to the 10-wheel dump trucks that are hauling out of there. How, how do you explain to a kid, when he watches these dump trucks come out of there, that he's gonna go through there on his bicycle and cause more damage than these trucks?
I certainly would not explain that to a kid, and I'm certainly not gonna defend the gravel removal aspect of this project. That's a condition that existed when the town acquired that property. So I think that, you know, obviously, that's a particularly invasive use, but that was a condition of the town's acquisition. Going forward, I think what we're talking about are the trails on the portion of the property that is largely in its natural state. I think, you know, I don't, I have small kids who ride bikes, and I'm not particularly concerned about them. And again, this is, I'm speaking for the state and I, and not for Greenbelt. This is the state's condition. It's not little kids on bikes with training wheels that are the concern. It's adult mountain bikers riding at 25 miles an hour, making new trails all over the place, and riding at a speed that is, in their opinion, incompatible with rare species habitat.
Follow-up.
Yep.
I have a problem with the conservation restriction, because the conservation restriction, we're giving up, giving up development rights to the land forever, and forever is a pretty long time.
Sure.
And when I've read from your website, if somebody donates land to the Essex County Greenbelt, and your words from the, from the, "Conservation restrictions are flexible tools that can be placed on all or designated parts of the land. Conservation restriction is tailored to your unique circumstances and your individual property."
That's right.
So what difference is it if somebody donating the land as far as the town of Groveland purchasing the land with the conservation restriction on it? Why can't we, why can't we, as the owners of the property, set up and tell Essex County Greenbelt and the Natural Heritage how we want it? Because.
I'd love to answer the question.
I go back, I go back to several years ago, when the town of Groveland ran the water line down Center Street, and there was, there was many reasons for that. And one of it was to increase the value of the property for businesses along Center Street. And that was, that was years ago. Well, so now, times have changed, and we put a conservation restriction on it. And if we give up all rights to the property forever, again, a long time, maybe the next generation wants to use it for something else. And, and just to expand upon that, I've ridden bicycles in a lot of the bicycle trails around in the area. And we have, some of them have a billboard as you're entering the property, which says, "You're entering a sensitive area, a conservation area," and they have, they have actual bike trails through there. Well, what, with this conservation restriction that we're putting on here, this would prevent the town of Groveland in the future from putting a hot-topped pathway through there for bicycles. And I just think it's restricting too much for future generations, and I'm, and I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to address just a handful of them. To your point about giving up development rights forever, you don't actually have those development rights now because of the way that the town acquired this property. You used Community Preservation Act Open Space Funds, and you used the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and you used turtle mitigation money by virtue of the solar installation that was a taking of turtle habitat. So the town's acquisition of the land did not come with any development rights that you're now giving up. In fact, it's a requirement that you convey the conservation restriction. So just to be clear on that, with respect to our description of conservation restrictions broadly on our website, yes, they're a flexible tool, they're tailored to individual situations, they're tailored to different landowners. Again, in this case, town meeting voted to acquire the entire property along, you know, with a set of criteria using certain funding sources, so the conservation restriction applies to the whole thing. I've already addressed the comment about bicycles. Greenbelt does not have a problem with bicycles, we all have bicycles on the majority of our properties. Again, this is a specific situation with rare species habitat, where the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife gets to have an opinion because of the use of the turtle mitigation funds. So your point is taken, I appreciate the comment, but again, it's not, it's not something that I can address.
So the decision on how that land has already been used has already been determined, basically is what you're saying, by the, by the way we use the funds?
By the town meeting vote.
Right. Bill?
Probably more directed to Mike. The piece of land we're talking about is the, to try and clarify this, is the piece of land, the Angelini property and the Mattingly property, which was purchased for the well, future well sites.
Yes, right.
The front Center Street piece, which was purchased with the money that we possibly may develop it in later date. Is these restrictions going on that property?
No.
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 So I wanna make sure that everyone understands this going forward.
Absolutely.
Because I, my co-part here, Ed, may, he might be thinking that front piece, because the way I took it in the conversation, we're talking about this whole piece of land. It isn't, it's really where the well sites are.
Yes, and that front piece, it's 60 acres.
Right.
The former busing property, also known as Strawberry Field, is not covered by this conservation restriction. And that was done by the selectmen. The selectmen, we, when we were talking about purchasing this, the selectmen decided that they would let conservation work on the two rear properties, the Mattingly piece and the Angelini piece, and use CPA funds to do it. We asked, "Do you want to use CPA funds and purchase the busing property?" And they said, "No." The front piece, we'll be able to buy with town money, with the idea that someday we may need it for different things. You know, already, you've given up three and a half acres for the firing range that's out there of the 60-acre parcel. Someday, you know, we may wanna build a fire station there or some other, or affordable housing there. We can do that. And so I understand what you're saying, Ed. I think this is maybe the best compromise that we could come up with, that about half of the property in the back is protected and will be useful for passive recreation. And the front piece will allow, you know, allow us to do some other things we may need someday.
So, so the second part of my, my, my conserva, yes, whatever, back to you, kinda to Mike. That land I just talked about, the front parcel, I, Mike just said it, the firing range. In the process of doing the firing range, I heard a lot of problems with turtles, and we're gonna shut it down, and blah, blah, blah. So if we go to do the front parcel down the road, are we gonna have problems with turtles and conservation? So is this just a way to prolong this for the time being, and later on, we're gonna have all these restrictions? So what's there to say? Yeah, you can go ahead, the 60 acres is good to build on, we could do something with, but down the road, it may not be good to build and what have you. And we might be going through the same thing that we're going through at this three-acre site from the gun range.
Well, I think we have to realize that, you know, this particular entire property is, has been recognized by the state as a sensitive area. has been recognized by the state as a sensitive area for turtle habitat. We were very fortunate to put in the solar field. But in order to put the solar field in, they had to make some concessions in order to do that. Someday, we may need to make other concessions depending upon what we want to do with the busing property. The state through Fish and Game Natural Heritage Program are the ones who has the biggest say on that property. Not the entire busing property is turtle habitat. The center of it isn't, but the edges are. And unfortunately, where the firing range is, came under their permit process. But, they filed for a permit and they were allowed to build it. So, some of it is going through the process that you have to go through.
So, down the road, we're going to probably have to go through the process.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, we're going to be able to work through the process.
Well, it sounds like an item-by-item discussion.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Lisa? Bill?
Yeah, this probably goes better to Chris than to Mike. Does the Fish and Game Department ever make exceptions to the rule about bicycling? You know, is there any kind of special request that we could make on our behalf to, you know, give us a, what would you call it, a pass?
I think it depends on the property. And in this case, the folks at the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife felt bicycling wasn't appropriate. Mike, I don't know if you want to comment to that more, but that's the...
Yes. So, I commune, after Ed brought this up at the last meeting, I communicated with the chief biologist at Natural Heritage, Dr. Eve Schluter. She's been out to the site. She was the one who worked through the permit on the firing range. I think that, you know, so what I did was ask her, "Is there any possibility that we could remove bicycles from this?" And she said, "No, you know, they firmly believe that this is an area that's too sensitive and they're not willing to allow that." But I, as I say, I think they've already given us a break with putting the solar field in. They've already given us a break with allowing the firing range to go in. So, you know, maybe we're on a little shaky ground as far as what we really can ask for right now with Natural Heritage.
Well, what they've given us, they've given us, they can't take back, right?
I'm not sure that I, that I understand your question.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about, you don't, you don't seem to want to push the envelope on this issue because they've, they've given us concessions in the past and other things. Can they take them back? Can they take those concessions that you're talking about back?
The solar field and the gun range.
The solar field, okay.
No.
Okay, so, there's no really harm there. Now, if I took no for the first time, I'd never get married, right? So, is there an appeals process? There's got to be, there's always a higher authority, you know what I mean? Is there an appeals process to that? I mean, so, one person said no. Are they judge, jury, and executioner? I mean, is there no appeals process to that?
She is the person that the Division is going to look to for a recommendation on activities that are acceptable or not in that habitat. And again, that is related to the specific fact pattern here, that because of the turtle habitat mitigation that was required as part of the solar field, that state will relay is now on this land.
Yeah, I get all that. It applies to the Mattingly and Angelini properties. It's because of the way the funds we use to buy the property. But I'm just asking, is there, there's usually an appeals process in everything. Is there an appeals process in this? You know, maybe there isn't. Okay, that's the answer. No, there isn't. I'm just wondering if there is. And if there is, why don't we pursue it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really know how to answer your question. This is a, this is a process that's been going on for literally years now. And as Mike just said, you know, had an ongoing conversation with the person at the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, who is the head wildlife biologist, who is going to be making the recommendations to the rest of the agency about an issue like this.
Right, I mean, it could be just nobody's ever asked a question before. Maybe I'm the first person ever to ask the question. I don't know. Like I said, maybe the answer is no. I just want to know, is there an appeals process?
There's no formal appeals process. I mean, I think the Division could refuse to sign this, in which case, the whole thing is just nowhere. I think that's what, that's what they're saying.
Okay, that's what I need to understand then.
Anybody else? Ed?
What happens if, what happens if the town doesn't, doesn't sign the paperwork? What happens if the town doesn't go for the conservation restriction? And I'll give you an example. Last meeting, we were talking about out on Wood Street. Mike alluded to the fact that the Town of Groveland has owned the property for 10 years, probably plus. And we never put a conservation restriction on it, but we should. What happens if we don't put a conservation restriction on this property? What's the state going to do? Because it doesn't look like they did anything in 10 years out on Wood Street. So, I would say, call their bluff and don't do it. Would the Essex County Greenbelt get involved and pursue litigation that we didn't vote for a conservation restriction on it?
Just to be clear for people listening at home, we are, we are here glad to be a partner with the town and be a holder of the conservation restriction. We are in no way here to impose our will on the town. We're trying to help implement something that is required by the CPA statute and by a Town Meeting vote that was taken several years ago. The most immediate issue is that you wouldn't qualify for any ongoing state grants with respect to additional land acquisition or park improvement projects. You have to be up to date with your CPA-required conservation restrictions. So, when the day comes that that's on the docket again, that would need to be resolved. I don't know, Mike, if you want to speak to that issue.
I'm one that believes if you own the land, we ought to be able to do what we want with it. And I don't, I don't like all these restrictions that are put on it. And then there's exceptions. It's, you've got restrictions that you can't run bicycles or four-wheelers and stuff through, but yet, there's an exception that if we develop a land out front, you can run a sewer easement through there. You're going to have to dig up to run a sewer easement through there. And that's not going to bother the turtle habitat.
Wow, there's already a sewer easement there.
It doesn't make sense. It's not common sense. And I know in government, common sense doesn't prevail. But you know that a lot of these restrictions don't make sense.
I do not know that. But I will say that there is a pre-existing sewer easement. For when the town acquired the property, it was already there.
So, it's got to be dug up.
The conservation restriction does not wipe out pre-existing rights.
I read that. But you have, but you have to, you have to dig, you see what I, what I mean? You have to dig that property up to run the sewer line through there.
Right.
And that's not going to bother the turtle habitat.
No, but you can't just willy-nilly go in there and do it. You're going to have to do it under the direction of Natural Heritage and the conservation restrictor holder to make sure that you do it right and take into account the turtle habitat. But I did want to just address this idea of conservation restrictions. We already have conservation restrictions in town. We have two major conservation restrictions. One is on Beezy Park, okay? Beezy Park Conservation Restriction is a very straightforward restriction. The only little difference with that is that because it had buildings on it and a swimming pool, that something had to be done. The most, the thing that seems to make the least sense is when the town bought Beezy Park, guess what we had to do with the swimming pool? We had to fill it in because the conservation restriction didn't allow for non-passive recreation like swimming, okay? Did we decide not to buy Beezy Park because that seemed to make no sense? Did we say, "We're not going to put this conservation restriction on the property"? No, we didn't. And here we are, we're 21 years later. We've got Beezy Park, we've been enjoying it. I would say probably, how many people, Vanessa, come up and ask if they can go swimming in our swimming pool? You know, they don't. We've gone over that. It seemed crazy at the time, unfortunately, but it hasn't hurt us. The other place that we have a conservation restriction is on Meadow Pond. Meadow Pond is a very large area. It does not have any restriction on bicycles. So, we do have a large area, and we don't have a restriction at Beezy Park either on bicycles. So, there are already two large properties where bicycles are allowed. I think that it's unfortunate. I don't completely agree necessarily or understand why we can't have bicycles. But I think it's a sacrifice that we can make in order to, you know, do what, do the right thing. The right thing is we have to put the conserva, we don't really have a choice. You know, we could say, "No, we can not sign it tonight. We can vote against it. It's really not the way to go." The right thing, unfortunately, we have to, you know, bite the bullet and sign this tonight and be done with it. And just accept that no bicycles will be on that site.
So, just a couple, Lisa, did you want to say something?
I just want to make a motion.
One second. Just a couple of points. So, just to recap, it sounds like we pretty much already designated what that land was going to be the way we purchased it. And I think we're harping on bicycles, but the bicycles is just a point, right? We're talking about multiple activities that we would like to be able to use down there, which you clearly stated, the only ones that we could actually use down there. So, we keep saying bicycles, but it actually applies to several other items. So, did anybody else have any comments at this point?
The only quick comment I'll make is, I've said it, I'll say it again. When we acquire these properties, and nothing to do with Greenbelt, but I understand you're only in here to help us get the property going and do what you need to do to protect it. But we, when we acquire the properties, we really need to know ahead of time what's going to transpire, what kind of restrictions. And let the town people know and let the town people do their best vote. And that's it. Once we've made that decision, then we move forward and we, and we purchase it. And we do what we need to do to protect it, you know?
Okay. Anybody else?
I don't think we had, I don't think, when the townspeople voted for it, I don't think they had all the answers. And we just, we just received this list of restrictions. And I'm wondering if the townspeople knew all the restrictions that were going to be put on the property that they bought, if they would have voted for it, for it to be used, conservation money for it.
You're absolutely right. 100%.
And all I'm saying going forward, we need to be better and do diligence.
Absolutely.
And let the people know.
Absolutely. And, you know, I don't think that the people of Groveland are that stupid. I think the people of Groveland are very smart. They know the difference when we buy something with open space that perhaps it may have restrictions. All we have to do is look back in the history, like I say, Beezy Park. Do we have anyone complaining because we had to fill in a swimming pool? No, because we've got so many more benefits from the facility now.
What happens?
So, I think you're absolutely right, Bill, that we should clearly tell people when it's an open space property and it may have restrictions. Unfortunately, sometimes, we don't know all the restrictions that may end up being on it. But there's a, you know, there's a danger. We should never buy open space property thinking that someday we're going to build a school on it or someday we're going to put a pool on it or whatever.
You know, it's, it's something down the road, we've had this conversation already. But if you take the 150, this 150 Center Street front parcel, people said that they were pushed into buying that because it was an acrofer. We're trying to protect the acrofer, there's turtles. And people feel now they were pushed into it. You know what I'm saying? So, I just want to, going forward, as long as I'm on this board, I want to make sure that the town people get a fair shake and understand there's going to be restrictions or not. And I know what you just said, it could be six months down the road. But I don't think we should purchase it. And I don't think we should sign the dotted line until the town people know what they're buying with all the restrictions. And that's all I'm saying. And I don't want to hold it up anymore. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make just one final point, just again, for the folks at home, that the Town Meeting votes in 2013 indicated that these two parcels would be acquired under the care, custody, and management of the Conservation Commission for open space, passive recreation, water supply, and water supply protection purposes. And to further authorize a selectmen of the Conservation Commission to convey such restrictions on said land pursuant to General Laws Chapter 184 as are required by General Laws Chapter 44B, Section 12A, et cetera. That's a summary of those two Town Meeting votes. So, I would submit that at a, to a certain extent, and I would say pretty clearly in the article from that time, that the voters were on notice as to what the purposes of the acquisition were, in my opinion.
Please refrain from talking until you've been notified that you've been accepted to talk. Lisa, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conservation restriction for 150 Center Street.
Got a motion, any second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
I would just like to make sure that if we can possibly amend it, that it does not, when we say 150 Center Street, it does not include that front piece. So, if I can put a friendly amendment in there, I just don't want to have them restrict the front piece until...
I'm fine with that. I mean, I think it just specifically speaks to the piece that they're bringing forward tonight. And I think there's a map that sort of identifies where that space is.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to this question?
Yep.
So, the locus, as is indicated here, is Center Street. The deed references refer, and this has been reviewed by your town council, the deed references are specifically the two, the rear parcels and the exhibits refer to the plans of those parcels.
I haven't seen that, so that's, thank you.
Okay.
So, it's pretty clear what the property is that we're...
Yes.
Deeming, okay.
Absolutely.
I'm just saying, it was in your package.
Okay. All right, so we have, any further discussion? Ed, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
How about number two here? The question number two, is hunting allowed on a property? Have you addressed that?
I think it's currently not allowed.
And could we, and it's, the commission could decide outside of the CR restriction to allow it, could we, could we add that in that it would be allowed? Hunting and trapping allowed on that property?
I think there's a process that we can go through to do that, but we can't just say it. You know, we'd have to go through the process of doing it. The Conservation Commission would have to have a hearing and...
You have to apply for a permit, basically.
But it is possible to do it.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? One.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next up, and almost on time, School Committee Presentation on School Building Project. We have some time for them to set up.
Do you guys want a microphone to stand here? Do you want to stand at the phone?
I'm going to stand over there. Sure. Sure. Thank you for giving us this time. I'm Andy Murphy.
One second.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
No problem. As I was saying, I'm Andy Murphy. I'm chairman of the Penn Tucket School Committee. I'm also on the building committee. I'm here. My partner in crime over there is Brad Dorr with Dorr &amp; Whittier. And he's going to take over from me at one point when this gets too technical for my competency. But we wanted to give you all an opportunity to just get caught up in what's been going on with the school building project. There's been a lot of progress being made and we just wanted to get you up to date on that. And this is really the beginning of what we would hope to be multiple public interactions with you and other organizations to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So, first, why are we doing this? Well, the high school, as some of you probably know, was built way back in 1956. And as I say, it's the, it's the poster child for Eisenhower-era construction. It's a typical brick, you know, school building. Brad mentioned too, that the middle school was actually built 50 years ago and that's when the Beatles released Sergeant Pepper's. So, what we're looking at here, while the project officially is focused on the high school, we'll talk a little later about why. We're also talking about the middle school to some extent. But beyond the infrastructure and the fact that they're aging is the systems within the schools. And, you know, most of them were built for about a 30-year lifespan. They're now operating at about double that, so they're 60 years old. When systems get that old, obviously, when they break down and you've got to find replacement parts, it can be very difficult. They may not be available anymore and you have to get them fabricated or you may have to find them in some obscure place. So, when we're looking at the age-back system or the electrical systems, we're talking about systems that have been around for roughly double their expected useful life. So, that's, that's an area that is not apparent to the naked eye from the exterior of the building, but it's something to consider when we think about the age of these, these buildings. There is a litany of repairs that go on in the, in the high school. There is a litany of repairs that go on in the high school. And we've seen a number of rather severe incidents in recent years. We had a gas line leak that caused an evacuation. In 2014, we had a water pipe burst which flooded one of the classrooms and ruined all the modular classrooms. And these are ongoing incidents that happen. It's sort of a running joke that, you know, will the power stay on today? Because it seems like every time a squirrel stands in the wrong place, the power goes out. The important thing to remember here is that, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, but it's the idea of the cost of doing nothing. There is no zero-cost solution here because this is costing us money today. And this is money we're spending on stuff like getting that water out of there that could be spent on education. As I said, these repairs are ongoing. And you look at some of the old, the old pieces of equipment and infrastructure, and the, you know, the corroded electrical duct bank and the electrical line and panel explosion, these are all, these are all things that pop up at any time and can cause the school to shut down for a period of time. We're lucky that it hasn't been something that's caused something more catastrophic where the school might be shut down for a more extended period of time. So, that's sort of the quick and dirty explanation as to why we're doing this from the building standpoint. Let's talk a minute about education. When you think about education back in 1956, some of us of a certain age remember. You went into a classroom, you lined up a desk, you sat down, a teacher talked at you. After 50 minutes or something, the bell would go off, you'd leave the classroom. Education's changed a lot today. It's much more collaborative, project-based, students have a need to move around, equipment needs to be brought in and out of rooms. So, the building itself, the way it's structured and constructed out of cement blocks, it just doesn't have the flexibility to really accommodate the type of education approaches that schools are using today. And this just isn't at the high school level. You go to the collegiate level, it's the same thing. They're all very collaborative, project-based, kids running around, having classes outside. And it even extends right into the workplace. You know, a lot of offices now, I mean, I had an office. It was just a bunch of open tables with people sitting there because everyone's working together. You know, the days of being confined in a discreet office are gone. So, the school's actually out of step with what kids are going to encounter as they move through life, both in college and in the workplace. And when we look at, you know, what does the world look like today versus 1956? Well, for one thing, there's a lot of technology today that there wasn't in 1956. And it's funny, my kid goes to high school, and he came home one day because he hears me go on about this stuff. And he said, "Hey Dad, in my physics classroom, there are only two electrical outlets." Like, wow, that's an interesting data point. But, you know, think about all the equipment you need. We've got two electrical outlets in a physics classroom. And again, the flexibility, you need the flexibility for project-based learning. And, you know, if you look, compare these two science classrooms. The one on the left is sort of the traditional fixed tables, fixed chairs. The one on the right, everything's on wheels, you can move it around, stools on wheels, lots of light. You know, it's just made so you can quickly move around, reconfigure, and engage in different types of projects. So, a real quick review of what's happened to date, going back to April 2015. That's when Dr. Mulqueen and his crew submitted their original statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, AKA the MSBA. And they did a good job at it because we were accepted into their pipeline. And only a small percentage of districts do get accepted into that pipeline. So, in June, we started, it's kind of hard to read on the screen there, but it's called the eligibility period. And the eligibility period is essentially, takes several months. It involves just giving the MSBA all kinds of data and information. What's interesting is, again, the administration and the staff got that done much faster than what the actual deadline was. So, we got about three months ahead of schedule in October 2016. So, we're actually a little ahead of schedule at the MSBA. And once we did that, we were accepted into this phase we're in now, which Brad will dive into much more granular detail on, it's called the feasibility study. And when you do the feasibility study, now you start doing things like forming a building committee, which we did about a year ago. We chose our project manager, Vertex. We hired Dorr &amp; Whittier just recently. But beyond that, what we've done is we've started to engage the community, have public hearings, for example, because we need to really get input on what people are looking for in a potential building project. And this is where we get back to why I was talking about the middle school earlier. Because the MSBA, one of the first things they did, they said, "Go to your town and see if they would be open to a 7 through 12 configuration of a building." Because when you look at those two buildings and how old they are, it may make sense to just take care of both of them at once. Obviously, it's more efficient to build once versus looking at something else with a middle school down the road. But that's premature to talk about, but we've been doing all sorts of community outreach to get input on stuff like that. We had a public hearing. The administration has launched a survey tool called Thought Exchange. It's like a survey on steroids where people can rate things, what's important to them, you know, one star through five stars. And that's not only about school configuration, but what's important to them in the school system when it comes to things like safety, learning environment, that kind of thing. And what brings us here today is we sort of have all our seasoned pros in place with Vertex and Dorr &amp; Whittier. And, you know, that really, I think, puts us in a good position to have our experts in tow here who can help guide to those of us who have not done this before, myself included. And, you know, one of the most important things they talked about and that we are totally on board with is making sure we get out into the community, let people know what's going on, because I think transparency is really important here. Now, I'm going to hand it off to Brad because he's smarter than I am.
I don't know about that, but I do thank you for having us tonight. Again, my name is Brad Dorr with Dorr &amp; Whittier Architects. And I think what Andy has done is he's given you a little bit about the history over the past year to 18 months of what the district has been doing in terms of bringing this project forward and trying to get that into the state process with the MSBA. And I think that's really important for everybody to understand that there is a process here. And it's actually a fairly well-proven process. The state funds, and through the MSBA has funded billions of dollars' worth of school projects. And, you know, over the past several years, I think they've learned a lot in terms of what works and what doesn't work. And so, they have a very prescribed process, which is what really this diagram starts to outline. And if you see this green line right here, that's about where you are. You know, the first two modules, which Andy described, where as you get into the MSBA program, basically establishing the need in Module 1, and then going and starting to bring your project team together. I'm also accompanied here tonight by John Lemieux, okay, from Vertex Project Management. And the project manager is really acting as your liaison through the district back to the MSB and working as an important part of our project team. And so, right now, where we are, is we've just started, having brought the design team onboard, the feasibility and schematic design phase. And really, that's the first phase, if you will, of the MSBA project. And then, the subsequent phases, 5, 6, 7, and 8, or the second phase, which really starts talking about doing more detailed design, actually going out bidding the project, building the project, then at the end of the day, occupying it. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. But again, the important part to understand here is there is a process. And it really does mandate that there's a significant amount of public input into the process. So, what we wanted to do just by this very first meeting and meeting with your board is to go and establish that we will be meeting with you hopefully again. There are a number of meetings and outreach programs with the public, and we'll be trying to describe what those are. The star, okay, which everybody has always, since, at least since I've been onboard, and I live locally, I live in West Newbury, so some people have found out and said, "Congratulations," you know? "I hope you do the right thing. How much is it going to cost?" The answer to that is, we don't know. And actually, that's good news right now because what we're doing is we're really starting with a clean slate. And that's really what the MSBA process dictates. So, we talked about community, excuse me, community engagement. So, there are a number of scheduled meetings. And as the process dictates, we'll be following those. But going along the way, if we find that, you know, people have more questions, and, you know, we need to be able to get, you know, what's going on out there and be able to communicate that, certainly the project team is, you know, able to do that, willing to do that. So, the first, whoops, so the first area that we're talking about, we're talking, I'll get into this in a minute, is some visioning sessions, which are open to the public. And after that, we'll be actually going and doing some work as the project team to develop what the range of options are. And then ultimately, what comes out of that is there'll be some type of preferred option that ultimately will be going forward and asking the MSBA to vote on to be able to go and say, "This is actually the, what in their opinion is the right option for this school district to pursue." Obviously, we're going to be doing that in conjunction with the building committee, the school committee, your boards, as well as the other two towns. And then finally, our expectation is that once we've gone through this process, sometime in the fall of 2018 of next year, we'll be coming back to towns for the organization. I'll get into that process in just a second. So, with respect to the visioning, we do have three scheduled dates, on the 8th, the 15th, and December 13th. I would encourage everybody to go if you don't have anything else to do. And I think the series will be open, we'll be able to get some sleep hopefully. But really, what this is about is to have our project team, we have educational planners onboard, and to be able to suss out from the community, from the teachers, from parents, from students, from everyone, okay, what's important to the town? And start to put some of these questions on the table, as Andy was saying, with respect to grade configuration. Is it a middle-high school project? Is it just a high school project? And starting to go and get some of that feedback, as well as from our professional perspective, to start to identify and outline what some of the other alternatives that are, that are out there in the world. It's a big place in terms of what the educational opportunities are because a lot of times, people are most familiar with what they know. And, you know, if you're not out there doing this every day, not everybody's in the business of going and building school projects every day, it's really important to see what some of those opportunities are. So, again, I would encourage you to come if you have, or tell all your friends. And all you have to do is sign up with Dr. Mulqueen. So, the first step in that Phase 1, as I was describing, is the feasibility study. And what we've already started to do is we've had our team out here, and we have about 20 different firms that are involved under our umbrella, architects, engineers, acousticians, mechanical, structural, you name it. We've got it to really go and go through the existing buildings, both the high school and the middle school, to understand what we have. And really, that is something that feeds into our analysis of what is the potentially, the universe of options that you have. Andy mentioned the "do-nothing" option, which is called "do-nothing" in quotes because really, you know, in terms of "do-nothing," people talk about that as a code renovation upgrade. And there's a cost, obviously, associated with that. So, we'll understand what that means. In that particular situation, there's no accommodation made for educational requirements. And in that situation, that's something that the MSBA would not participate in because it's something that doesn't meet the educational guidelines that they're addressing. Then we would also look at a renovation or a renovation addition option, as well as new construction. So, we would be really six of those, if you think about it, because it would be a middle-high school, as well as the high school times three. So, we'd have six different options, and then permutations on those options as we start to get into the process. And then, based on that, we would develop a very preliminary comparative cost estimate at a very high level to really understand what the value is relative to one another, what those various options would yield. And then ultimately, out of that, taking the many and really kind of condensing that down into the one, is to understand, you know, what we think that the preferred option would be, working with the working group, the building committee, and then having that feedback and that give and take back again with the communities. At that point, once we have the preferred option identified, we really start getting into a little bit more detailed design to make sure that, you know, we understand how everything is going to work, what the educational objectives are, and to make sure that those are being realized as part of the building that we're designing. So, we'd be looking at the building, we'd be looking at all of the site requirements, we'd be looking at athletic fields, all of those types of things. And ultimately, at the end of schematic design, we would be doing a very detailed cost estimate that's required by the MSBA. And actually, there's two cost estimates. One would be performed by an independent cost estimate that we would retain, as well as one that Vertex would retain. So, you have two different sets of eyes on that, and then those would be reconciled. And ultimately, then you have an option that you've selected as the preferred option. You have a cost associated with that, and then the first step typically is to go to the MSBA and get them to validate that the process has been followed and they actually concur with what the process has yielded. And then, at that point, once they've gone through, then the communities, or the three communities, have an opportunity within 120 days to come up with their share, their balance of the project costs. So, just to give you a sense, a lot of times, people talk about it's a 50-50 type situation. So, if the cost were $10, you know, the MSBA would approve a $10 project based on your reimbursement rate, which is about 52%. And then, you would go and have the regional cost contribution finalized. I want to just be clear that when we talk about your reimbursement rate of 52%, it's based on 52% of eligible costs. And so, there's a whole series of things that have to go into play or come into play in terms of defining what all those costs are as eligible. It usually doesn't go up, it usually goes down. So, the range typically is more in the 40 to, in these communities, probably in the 40 to 55 range, probably, you know, in the high 40s, low 50s, somewhere in there, just to give you the sense.
What's an example of an eligible cost?
So, an eligible cost is, for example, they have a construction cost cap. And so, their construction cost cap today, I believe, is about $326 a square foot. Most of the time today, we're seeing construction costs in excess of that. So, they would only fund up to that cost level, up to the 326. So, if you are at 350, the difference between those two is something that the towns would be paying full freight on. They would only reimburse that percentage up to that cost cap.
So, that 326 is an average cost for the entire building, call it. And I would assume that like a science building or a gymnasium would be more than 326 per square foot. So, if that ends up being 500, you're looking at 170, $164 extra per square foot that the town would have to come up with.
That's right. And typically, typically, you know, new construction, which is what that number is paid to, those costs are over, you know, we see those significantly over that number today. You know, another example of that might be, they have a formula, which is $2,400 for loose furnishings and loose technology. So, you know, if it goes up to that amount, you know, they're reimbursing up to that level. If it goes over that amount, right, then that's something that the district would be carrying full freight. So, and we're going to go through all of those and make sure everybody understands those so that there's no miscommunication about, well, how come our number is this when I thought we were getting 52%? So, it's really important to identify what those are and get that out in the public environment so that people understand that you don't have a surprise when you're going and asking everybody to, you know, come up and approve the project.
Thank you.
So, again, just breaking down feasibility and schematic design just on this graphic and the timeline, we've gone through, you know, some of the things here in terms of leading up to the preferred option. When we get into the second half of this, which would be next summer, later next summer, we would actually be doing that additional design to get to the schematic level, the cost estimates, submit that to MSBA. And at that point in time, I think we would be coming back out in full force to make sure that everybody understands where we are, okay? And, you know, here's what the project is, this is why we've made the decisions, you know, that we've made to get it to this point. And here's what the associated cost is, both in terms of total aggregate project cost, as well as what the towns' shares would be, and the reasons for that, this whole reimbursable notion that I was just going through. And then again, hopefully, glass half-full, we'll be at that point where we'll be asking the towns to approve that sometime next fall. Glass half-full, then you would be authorized to move into Phase 2, in which case, you would be signing a project funding agreement with the state. And at that point, the project team would be getting into very detailed design, you know, for a period of about a year, to go and get that to a point where, you know, it's actually ready to go and have construction documents or ready to go out and bid the project. And again, as we're going through this, I expect that, you know, we would be having more public presentations to let everybody know where we are. At this point, you know, people have signed off on what the project is. But people are always curious as to, well, what's going on? And I think, you know, a process that's transparent, you know, where people know what's going on, is going to be a better process for everybody involved. Then when you get to here in fall 2019, I think groundbreaking might- I, I think groundbreaking might be a little aggressive there, I'm not sure why I've got that there, but, uh, you know, that's when we would be starting, uh, I guess that's actually right, we'd be starting to break ground, uh, for construction. And then, uh, a couple, two and a half years, probably in that timeframe, uh, we'd be, uh, ready to go ahead and occupy a building. And we all know what that picture is, right? And hopefully, what we're able to do with this project is really to go and, and start to create a bridge to the future, uh, and to be able to go and create an educational environment for, for both, uh, students and for staff, uh, that's consistent with what we're seeing elsewhere, because as Andy said, right now, and, and I can tell you, we do an awful lot of this work all over the state, all over New England, uh, there comes a time. Uh, and, and you know, now when you talk about a building that's, you know, sixty-plus years old, uh, it, it, it is starting to get tired. And I don't think that we're telling you guys anything new. Uh, if, uh, if you didn't feel that way, you never would've authorized the funding to get into Phase One. Uh, so we have some work to do. Uh, you know, our job is to be able to go and present the facts. Uh, we have a very clean slate right now, uh, we've had a really good experience thus far, working, uh, with Jonathan and with Dr. Mulqueen. And, and I think that the process, if we follow it and, uh, we're diligent, I think that we can come up with a terrific solution here for, uh, the district. And I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Uh, yeah, I'll start, 'cause I do have a couple of questions. And I know it's really dependent on one of the six versions of projects you move forward with. But let's assume that it's new construction.
Yeah.
And let's assume that it's a high school and a middle school construction. Where do you think these are gonna go?
Yeah, where, what you mean, location?
Yeah.
Uh, I think, you know, we've had some discussion, we're, we're gonna continue to look at potential alternatives, but I, I, if, if I was a betting man, I would be saying that we, we would probably have a, a pretty strong bet that it's gonna be continuing at the site, uh, at the current site. Uh, you know, we have looked at it, uh, you know, from a, at a preliminary level, to go and, and see, you know, is it something that we think that we could make work? Uh, we do, and, and that's not just to go and jam it in there. Uh, but we do think that there's room on the site to be able to make that work. And I think there's a familiarity, uh, with the three communities about where it is. Uh, the other benefit of having that site is that, you know, it's bought and paid for. And if you were to go and look at an alternative site, that is not something, that, that, that's a really good example of an ineligible cost. With MSBA, they would not fund that.
So are you saying, behind the current structure, in front of the current structure?
Well, I'm not actually saying anything right now, but-
Well, you can't put it on top of it, right? So it's gotta be in front or the back of it?
Well, I can't tell you that, we're not gonna put it on top of it, and we're not gonna put it below it, but, uh, I-
No, that's good.
But, uh, you know, we, we are gonna look at all options on the site, uh, and, you know, whether it could be in front, out back, we don't know.
Okay. The reason I ask is because we just, uh, at some point over the last five or ten years, we just redid that front field. We redid and put that, uh, football field out front for practice, and we redid the fields and the complex behind the middle school, uh, with the track, which is really nice, and, and the center field back there, and the tennis courts, and the track and field equipment.
Right.
And if we're talking about putting a new middle school and a new high school, I think that some of that stuff's either gonna be affected, or all of it's gonna be affected.
Yeah. The way we, we, we've looked at it, and again, you know-
And I know it's all kind of up in the air right now, but I'm thinking that your preference would be new. Uh- Because it's, you know, it's easier just to build new and put all the technology and all the conduits and everything you need in there for future growth, rather than to try and staple things into these old concrete buildings and try to make it feasible.
Well, you know, because it's easy doesn't mean it necessarily the right thing to do.
Well, right, easy doesn't mean it's easy to pay for.
So, so I, I think that it, it's, it's important to, to look at all of those options and do that cost-benefit analysis. But, um, it, it, let's just say that it comes out so that it is new. One of the things that we've, we've, we've got running in the back of our minds, uh, is that, you know, the area, particularly, where we've done the new fields, the tennis courts, everything in behind the middle school, that, that area, you know, it's a little bit limited in terms of size, wetlands, okay, right in there between that-
Yeah.
And then as well as some back on, on the river edge there. Uh, we are, I also just think, from a political perspective, for the reason that you're asking this question, it's gonna be pretty hard to go out to the three communities and everybody who just, you know, helped, say, "Let's go get that done", to go and say, "Hey, you know, we're gonna go and bring the excavators in, and, uh, we think this is". But, at the same time, I think it's important that we look at it and make sure that that doesn't end up being the tail wagging the dog, because if it makes a lot more sense to do something there, because, for example, say it's a, it's a lot less site work or something, that might end up-
No, I understand.
It might be better to go and put it somewhere else. But initially, my gut reaction is, you know, that's probably something that's, we're, we're probably not gonna touch, and we would look to the areas in front of the high school and in, in, uh, in behind the high school as, as kind of the starting points, and see how we do. And then after that, uh, you know, you know, there may be some phasing, we'd, we'd like to try and stay away from phasing, you know, of, of the high school, but maybe some little pieces of that might get impacted, that you wanna weave in and figure out how to phase that as part of, uh, a new building project, if in fact it goes that way.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Bill, start with you, in ten?
Yeah, um, kind of a specific question, I don't know if you've handled this before. How do you deal with distraction? Um, the reason I ask is-
Not well.
I, I, I'll bet, and the kids, kids deal with it even less, well. Um, I recall when they built the new high school in Everett, they built it right next to the existing high school.
Yeah.
With, which all the construction and the steel beams and the cranes and the trucks, it's very distracting. Um, so how do you, how do you deal with that, where you can build this building without distracting so many students at the same time, where they stay focused? Because this is gonna go on for two, three years, right? So it'll be two or three, there'll be a number of classes that are affected by this construction on that site.
Yes.
And you'll have to have a site to, uh, you'll have to have a staging area to set up all your equipment, and you also have to have a site. So there's going to be quite a bit of goings-on on that property.
So the answer, the answer to that is, I don't know specifically how we're going to resolve that, but in, 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 uh, kind of big picture, uh, I, I, we've done a number of these, right? We're working on one right now over in Rowley at Pine Grove School, where that, that school is actually gonna be phased. And when we talk about disruption and building a new facility either adjacent to, or if it's a renovation project part of, uh, it, it's something that it is gonna be a bit of a distraction. But, you know, what we first do is, is, you know, the safety-first principle, it applies. So, we, if we have to go and take an area of the, either the site or the building, that will be construction and cordoned off as a completely separate area. Uh, so, you know, the safety piece of it, you know, we're gonna be very diligent in terms of ensuring that that takes place. From a distraction perspective, uh, you know, I'm not gonna lie to anybody here, you know, when all of a sudden, you know, you've got an active construction site going on, uh, adjacent to a school, you know, people are gonna notice it. Uh, but, I think at the same time, you know, we collectively, as, as, as a district and as three communities, need to keep our eye on what the end game is here, is that, you know, at the end of that two and a half, three years, right, then we get to knock that new building, if in fact it does go down as a new construction project. And then that's the project that we have for the next fifty or seventy-five years. So, is there gonna be some distraction? Yeah. Are we gonna break a couple eggs? Yeah. Uh, but at the end of the day, safety's not gonna be, okay, an issue, okay? We're just gonna have to do the best, and we're gonna go through and take some of those measures to mitigate that to the greatest extent possible.
Right, 'cause my, my fear is, is harming the last two or three years of students to go through those buildings-
Yeah.
-in an effort to, you know, make it great for the students to come after.
It's important, it, it's really important, and, and I think one of the things that, you know, we do, as well as Vertex's, and, and, you know, and I think, uh, we've started off on this foot, footing with the district, is, you know, that communication piece, that's, that's the most critical piece, right? To be able to go and say, "Okay, you know, this is what our plan is, and before we actually go out and bid this job, okay, this is something that we will understand how the various phases of this will take place prior, okay, to bringing a contractor in to go and start building." And so depending upon how we approach it, whether it's a general contractor, whether it's a CM, we, we, we may actually have their participation in, in part by putting their knowledge, okay, how they would build it, as part of the construction documents when we move forward. But again, it, it's having that dialogue between the project team, the builder, and, and, and the administration to understand, you know, what has to take place. And there are gonna be a couple of sacrifices, I, I, I'm just not gonna lie to you. But at, at the end of the day, uh, you know, it, it, it's done, it's done all the time, uh, and, and, you know, we're gonna do a good job making sure that it's phased properly.
Right, uh, my, my goal is minimum impact. Right now, you have a lot of students that, because of lack of space at the high school, are required to schlep over to the middle school for classes. If you take more existing classroom away from the high school, or either one, now you've got more shifting back and forth. I, I understand why it has to be done. I, I'm not a big fan of, of, of students going back and forth, the, the weather can be very inclement at times. And let's face it, we, we live in a world where there's nutcases out there. They'd love to see these kids walking back and forth, they're just not a good, not a good situation, so, you know, I just wanna see the, the least disruption possible for the kids that are going through that construction phase, so they get the best education possible, um, while this is going on.
We agree with that.
I'm all set.
So I have, uh, two questions, and they're sort of related to each other. The first is, you go through this process and you develop a variety of different options.
Mm-hmm.
How is it determined which option is the best?
So, that's a terrific question. So, uh, the first thing is, okay, we, we have, uh, the, the kind of the educational side of this that we're going through and that we'll be working, you know, again, with Dr. Mulqueen, with Jonathan, with the middle school principal, uh, with the school committee, with the building committee. And as part of, you know, our educational programming process and this visioning that I was speaking to, we're really going out there and trying to identify, you know, what are, what are the goals, right? And what are the, the values, right, that are trying to be determined here as part of the district? And, and, and it's different district by district. Uh, you know, thi- this district here, okay, uh, is, is a relatively progressive district, I would say. And so, we know, one of the things that we're trying to accomplish here is not just go and put new bricks and mortars in place, and so that we have a shining new penny that we can talk about, but really, we're building a school, or maybe we're building two schools as part of this, and, and to really to make sure that it meets the educational objectives, okay, of what the district is trying to achieve today, and what it's trying to achieve over the next fifty years. And that's one of the things that we're really focusing on, is how does the flexibility work, so that we don't have to go and, and have something that we're building today that's going to be outdated in ten years?
Mm-hmm.
At the same time, you know, we're gonna be going and looking at things like costs. And cost comes really in two basic categories. It comes in your capital cost, what you're putting down up front, you know, what is everybody gonna come next fall and have to go and approve if we wanna move this forward? And then what are the long-term operating costs of this? So when we start to design a building, we're looking at both of those things. And, and one of the things that we're looking at is, for example, sustainability of a building, right? And how can we make a building sustainable and reduce long-term operating costs by looking at a life cycle cost basis? You know, what does everything cost? So we're gonna balance out all of those things in terms of what are the educational objectives? Looking at cost, doing that cost-benefit analysis, to make sure all of those things seem to make sense. Those are vetted, okay, through a number of different sources, you know? We have a, a working group that we work day-to-day, we have a building committee, you know, that really has day-to-day responsibility of the project. And then we have the school committee, which I like to say, you know, really is looking at all things educational, as well as oversight from the district. So there's a lot of people, okay, that have say into that. And then at that same point in time, we're also going back and forth through these public input sessions to be able to make sure that, you know, we're listening to what people have to say. So it's not just that, "Here's what it is, you know, as, as the designer, this is what we think you should have, go take it, it's gonna be great". It's a dialogue, right, it's communication at the working level, and then it's also a dialogue that needs to be established at the community level.
Okay. So my second question is, you've got three different communities, not all of whom necessarily share the same values, and you develop this plan, so what I'm concerned about is sort of this all or nothing. So let's say we develop a plan, and, you know, there's the Mercedes, you know, there's different tiers. I'm really concerned about being in a situation where we develop something that there's not an appetite for, and people feel like it's just too much, and then losing the opportunity completely. So that's kind of a great fear that I have, is how do you balance sort of the needs of the community, the variety of communities, the need to have a school that sort of meets all these guidelines, and do it in such a way that, you know, all three towns can sort of embrace that?
So, so, and we've talked entirely, but we've actually talked about this a little bit. And, and I think, uh, you know, at the building committee level, working group, everybody, I think one of the things that we need to start to think about, right, is the fact that, even though we are three communities, ultimately, we're one district. And, and we've gotta start thinking like that. Um, you know, in terms of the cost, and, and that's not gonna be easy, you know, I've, I've lived here for twenty-five years too. Um, but I think we really need to start thinking about that, okay, if we're going to be successful, because everybody's, every, all three towns are gonna have to approve this.
Well, I don't disagree with you at all, but I think the issue is, it isn't up to me or you. At, at the end of the day, it's up to the voters.
And that's our job, right? And, and what, this is our first foray, actually, to, to go and start getting the message out and to get people informed, so that they have an opportunity to understand, right? And, and where, you know, what the process was, what the basis of the decision-making was. And, and I think that it's gotta be a two-way street too. I, I don't think that, and, and I haven't gotten the sense, uh, you know, from listening to the district or the building committee, that it's, it's a one-way, uh, dialogue.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I think that, you know, it, it does need to be a two-way dialogue. I, I think people need to listen to each other, at the same time, decisions still need to be made. Uh, so, but I, I think that there has to be a willingness on the part of, uh, the district and the building committees to listen to what people have to say. And then I think there also has to be, to a certain extent, a willingness, right? And, and a certain level of trust that has to be, uh, you know, had in order to have the, the entities, right, that are, that are responsible for this project, you know, move this forward. And then, you know, then the towns are gonna have to decide. Uh, but at the end of the day, you know, the other, I guess, beneficial factor here is that you can't go too far off of the rails because of the process that the MSBA and the state have set up. So, you know, if, if, if all of a sudden it, it starts to get where, you know, this project is, to use your term, a Mercedes, and it's a statistical anomaly, it, it's gonna get reeled back. Uh, and, and I, I also haven't got the sense from anybody yet that we've been working with, that you wanna go down that path, because I think everybody's really sensitive to the fact, uh, that, you know, people are gonna be concerned about cost, uh, and people are gonna be concerned about all these things. So, that dialogue, again, I think this communication and this transparency is, is really important. I don't know, maybe, Dr. Mulqueen?
Yeah, I'd like to just, uh, Andy, contribute to that. Um, one of the things, Lisa, that, um, I took a look at was a little bit of history lately. And from two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven, there's something that occurred in the communities, um, that was prompted by the district, and that was overrides. Every year, there was an override from two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven.
Mm-hmm.
So, since two thousand and twelve, there hasn't been any, uh, push by the district to cause an override. And what I think that's generated is a lot of trust, that no matter what we do, we make it within the ability of the communities to pay. So we never put an overburden on the communities, and I think we've come a real long way over the past couple of years in what we provide and in how we push on communities for the appropriate amount of, of, uh, support, financial support. But we are very good working partners, and, uh, I think that trust that's built over time is really what is at the crux of, of people understanding and believing that we may need something, you know, to afford our, uh, ability to educate students with a new building or with a renovation, but we're gonna do it within, you know, your means. So we're not looking for a Cadillac, we're looking for what's a practical solution to the problem that we have. And I think that practicality has played out over time, and, uh, I think everybody can depend upon that as we move forward. Sound okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
The only final thing, not to beat this to death, uh, I'll say is that we actually thought about that exact issue early on, and we are gonna be having several public meetings with people, and we are deliberately gonna do it, uh, one town at a time, but inviting the whole district. And, uh, we even talk about by, doing it by alphabetical order, so nobody can feel slighted. But we wanna, we wanna make sure everyone's together in these meetings, and we're not just having it in the high school or whatever. So we'll do one in Groveland, we'll do one in Merrimack, we'll do one in West Newbury, but everyone's invited, so there's this real sense that we're one district trying to get this done. Um, and, you know, honestly, when we were evaluating- And, you know, honestly, when we were evaluating architects, I think the fact that Brad and a lot of his people come from the district was a really important differentiator, because you do need to understand the three towns and what's going to fly and what isn't. So that, I think, played a big role in our poll selection process.
Bill? So some of my answers have already been answered. One of my first thoughts was, is there room to demo the junior high? Because this presentation was basically on the high school, but I'm sure the infrastructure in the junior high is in the same kind of condition that school was in, which I'm sure you guys have all got in the back of your mind, the junior high probably is going to be down the road, so we're going to pay twice down the road. So I'm sure that's something that you guys are all working on. So it sounds like that site over there couldn't be a site used for the high school, it's probably too small.
So actually, we're looking at both options. We're looking at high school and middle high school. And so all of the options, when I was talking about, you know, the code-only or do-nothing option, and then the renovation, renovation addition, or new construction, those would be conducted both for a high school only and for a middle high school. So in the middle high school scenario, we don't know exactly how it all kind of weaves together yet, but in that particular option, that would be an option where it, you know, maybe if it's a renovation, maybe the high school goes over onto that side. If it's new construction, you know, maybe it's a middle high school behind the current high school. We don't know yet, but all of those will be reviewed.
No, my point was, is it didn't sound like when Bill was talking, it didn't sound like there's room to put the kids from the junior high in the high school, build on that site, there wouldn't be any disruptions.
Oh, no, I think there, I think there is. That's what I was referring, I think that there's enough room there, okay, to be able to put both schools on that parcel.
Right.
I don't know exactly how it would all go together yet, but I think there is.
And I think that, and you probably wouldn't have to, I don't know enough about it, but I don't think you have to come back to the town people and sell it and say, well, the junior high's no good, we can't, you know, that site needs to go, we need to get rid of it. But I mean, it sounds like it would all be tied into this one overall project easily. I don't think it'd be a problem where you got to go do a presentation saying the junior high is outdated and we're going to go that route, you know, by putting it over there. You getting what I'm trying to say?
I do. And again, I think we're going to look at, look at all of those, okay, as part of it, you know, whether it's one side of the site, other side of the height, together, separate, you know, it'll be evaluated.
Right. And the other thing is, obviously, I haven't heard it tonight, but obviously, the MSBA, they must have already given you guys the green light, money committed. So if we go through all this and then we don't get the commitment from them, and they say they're not going to commit this project, are we wasting all this time and what have you?
So just go back to this slide right here. Where you are right now, okay, is right where this green line is.
Yep.
And so you, okay, the town and the MSBA have funded, okay, up through module four.
Yep.
And then when we go through this process that I've been describing, okay, and if we're in that position by the fall of 2018, like we hope to be, then the MSBA, okay, will vote as to whether or not they would approve the project. And then after that, there's 120 days that the towns would have to get their share lined up.
I understand that, but is there any point on that chart that they'd pull out and say, no, we're not going to, don't have the money, can't do it?
No.
So they're committed, is my point. They're committed?
They're committed to coming, so long as they believe, okay, after this phase, that we followed their process and that, you know, everything is in line, they're committed based on that. And then if their board approves that, then they would commit to that cost of the project. But they're not committed to anything beyond what they funded to date and to get you into this first phase of the project.
There's John Lue from Vertex. There's Trudy.
Can you get a microphone? Ed, do you have any questions?
John Lue from Vertex, we're the OPM. To what Brad is saying, there's two major submissions. You know, they're talking with us all the time, but they're going to check in with two major submissions that will be sent to them. One, the PDP, Preliminary Design Plan, and then the schematic design, different schematic design, where they're going to, with some other input along the way, where they're going to tell us what they think of where we're going. So to Brad's point, if they feel like we're starting to go off the rails, they're going to pull us back on. They don't invite districts into the program anymore. You know, the old MSBA was a little bit different, the old Massachusetts Building Authority, whatever they called themselves. If they make that commitment to you and you're in, they're going to, they want you to be successful. They want to fund the project to the end. So unless, you know, the project team goes crazy, or the towns say no to the vote ultimately, they've made the commitment by inviting you into the process.
Right. So they've pretty much made the commitment.
Yeah.
That's it? Yeah.
Yeah, most of the questions were answered, a great presentation by both of you. I just have two. Were you looking into the feasibility of perhaps portable classrooms during the construction phase to use, like if you need to use the high school, move them out of the middle school into some portable classrooms? Are you looking into that possibility?
We might. That's also another example of a non-reimbursable cost. So it's something, to the extent that we can avoid having to use modulars or portables as part of phasing, we try to do that just because, you know, it's expensive, because it's for a couple of years. And so if we can avoid that cost, we would try to, because it's not reimbursed by the MSBA. But if it's something that there's no way around it, we would incorporate that into the phasing plan.
Okay. The other question, is it part of the eligible cost for athletic fields upgrades?
To a certain extent. They have certain things that they're not willing to go and fund, and then there's a lot of them that are.
Can you give examples of that they're not?
Fieldhouses, for example, are not reimbursable. And, you know, what a definition of fieldhouse is, you know, there's different definitions of what that is, but field, as a general, fieldhouses are not reimbursable. Artificial turf, okay, is not reimbursable. You know, and that's always a hot topic of discussion, particularly given, you know, the use that artificial?
Was that a play on words?
Pardon?
Was that a play on words?
Unintentional.
Good job.
So, you know, there's a couple of examples for you, but most of the other, you know, so long as you're able to ensure that they're part of a program, of a, you know, a legitimate program that goes along with the school project, they're on board with that, except for those couple of exclusions.
Thank you. Nice job.
And I think Bill had one more question.
I didn't have a question, I just wanted to clarify something with Selectmen Dunn. It's, I, it's about the classrooms. They don't have, correct me if I'm wrong, they don't have enough classroom space to handle all the classrooms they have at one time. So in order to accommodate the students, they have to ship some of them over to the middle school at times and back and forth, they share some classrooms. I don't think it'd ever be possible to stick all the students in one building while you tore down the other, or vice versa. There's just no space. But I just worry about with the lack of current classroom space, we have to ship students back and forth. If you took any more of that space that isn't available now, you know, I don't want to cause a bigger disruption in the student population so that they're further distracted and that we make, you know, two or three years of really bad students coming out. That was my only concern.
So I know that this is an unorthodox question, but I'm going to ask it because I know some of the dynamics going on in Groveland right now, particularly around the issue of developing a senior center. And I'm just wondering if you're aware of any scenarios where schools have included a community space within their development, and whether that would meet SBA guidelines? Because I think something like that would have tremendous value, and I can tell you that there'd be a lot of people that would buy in more if there was ever an option like that. But I don't even know, you know, is that anything that would ever be viable? Have you ever heard of anything like that?
And Swambskett have something like that?
I could speak to that. So yes, when I was in Swambskett, we put the senior center inside the high school that is not reimbursable. So anything having to do with the senior center, parking, entrance, shared space, was not covered by MSBA.
But it wasn't that you couldn't do it, it was just?
Exactly. We were able to do that.
It, it's not that you can't do it. I don't think it's something that, you know, they're overly keen on. They're always open to having a discussion. So, but it isn't something that's excluded, but just as a general matter, community space, I think there's lots of different opportunities for community space within a school. You know, not specifically a program for a senior center. Again, I'm not trying to exclude it, I'm just saying that, but, you know, there are part of, there's, you know, the school is the essence of community. And so there's a lot of the spaces that we're going to be looking at that have a specific educational program objective, but in the vein of flexibility, we're looking at how can we go and leverage that up so that some of those spaces really can be viable, community spaces, when school's not in session? So I think there, you know, those are the types of opportunities. If it's something that ultimately that the district and the community said, you know, we want to investigate that, we certainly could. But it isn't something that, as you were saying, Denise, you know, that they go and say, you know, come on in and do it, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Route 97. Denise, do you need a minute? I guess we're going to wait a minute. All right. Next up, we have Route 97 project concerns to be discussed with Mass Department of Transportation and A.R. Belly. Can you go to the podium, please? So were you given this list ahead of time to kind of go over and come up with some kind of response to?
I have about a dozen items between two lists that were sent out.
Okay.
I assume I have the items?
Yeah, there's about 11 on here, and I added one more.
Okay.
And I'm sure you'll get a couple more, but?
We'll see if we added the same one.
So why don't we go through number one? I'll read it and then?
Excuse me, Mike, can he just introduce himself?
Oh, yeah, go ahead and introduce yourself, sorry.
Bill Keveney from the A.R. Belly Company.
Okay. So number one, mailboxes. Some have the buffer area around them, some are just stuck right into the concrete. So if a resident without the buffer has to replace their mailbox, they will have to dig up the sidewalk?
Well, the boxes were set according to the detail, and I assume the buffer, I mean, on one side, there's no concrete poured around them. On the other side is the concrete sidewalk.
Right.
But they were set in what they call expansion joint, which is a material that, so when you break out the concrete around the box, it doesn't disturb the remaining sidewalk. So if it was needed to replace the box, they could break up a small panel, about a two-by-two panel, and that would be the only thing that would have to be replaced for the sidewalk.
Just a question on that. I noticed that the mailboxes from Center Street towards Parker Road, none of those had those expansion joints around them.
I wasn't aware that there was any without expansion joint.
Well, I didn't see them.
Okay.
And it just seemed like it was towards the end of the project there, there was four or five of them that didn't have the expansion joints. The others, at the beginning of the project, did. But these, it seemed like there was three or four, but it was all from Center Street to Parker Road, obviously on the sidewalk side, they didn't have those on the mailboxes.
Yeah. The detail was for the expansion joint.
Ed, was that it for this one?
Excuse me?
Is that it for this?
Yeah, that's all.
I think we'll go through and we'll have the board ask questions on each topic and?
Yeah, that's all I have on that, Bill.
So as far as the mailboxes go, if the snowplows, which it's, you get a wet, sloppy, heavy, muddy snow, those mailboxes are going to snap off. And I'm not here to criticize you as the contractor because you didn't design the project. I clearly understand that. If you have a mailbox that snapped off, it's a wooden mailbox, expansion joint two inches or not, you're not going to get a post hole digger in there to dig down 36 inches to change those mailboxes. So I don't know what they're going to do to, if people have that happen. They're going to happen.
Well, no, the expansion joint shouldn't have been set immediately around just the post. It should have been set outside the post.
Well, the ones I've seen, I've seen them, it's only?
Four by four.
It's four by four. It's not, the concrete's pretty much right up to them.
Okay.
So they're not going to be changing those mailboxes too simply.
Well, and then, like I said, I'll recheck the detail, and we did do it according to the detail. I appreciate your concern.
Right. I run up that road, and I noticed a few of them are just poured right up to the post too. There's no, there's no box there.
Okay. Well, again, I think that unfortunately, apparently before, the boxes, of course, were settled on the side of the road, but they wouldn't plow to the edge of the road. Now with the curb there, I guess it's an invitation to plow to the edge of the road.
Right.
Suppose it's something hindsight, something could have been considered, but the detail in the jaw was for that design, so.
Lisa, anything on number one? Bill, anything on number one?
No.
Okay. Number two, we have manhole covers and drains look like they are set too low.
I've driven the job, and there probably are a couple of manholes that appear to be a little low, but we checked the, generally, if that happens, you worry about the yield on the asphalt that was put in too heavy. But the yield of the asphalt in the project was as close to perfect as we've actually ever seen. You do occasionally, sometimes you set a structure, because of the cross-slope of the road, you get a little bit of differential in the elevation. We don't think that it's that unusual, and we don't think it's an ongoing problem. And we've talked to the both of the town and MassDOT, and they seem to think that the actually was okay.
Bill, any questions on number two?
No, sir.
Lisa? Bill Dunn? Ed?
Yes.
Yep.
Some of those manhole covers and drains, they're not level. When you drive over them, they're in an angle. They're not, when you drive over, it should be a smooth ride, and it's not. Some of those manhole covers are tilted to one side, which could be one of two things, either the concrete didn't settle properly, didn't let it set up in time, but they aren't, they aren't straight. When you drive over it, you should be able to drive over it without much of a bump in the road, but they're not. Some of them are tilted to one side. They're not level. And how do I know that? I put a level on it. So I know they don't.
And I think what's important is that, what you're saying, and I think what the important part is, is if it's not on the same gradient as the roadway, that's an issue. But putting a level on them, they won't be level because there's grade in the roadway. So it's actually possibly two separate issues. There's a pitch in the roadway from the center line, well, it changed throughout the project, but generally speaking, from the center line to the curb, the road pitches to allow the water to run to the curb. So if you put a level on the structure, it's not going to be level. I think that the problem would arise if it's not on the same gradient as the roadway. And as I did say, there seems to be a couple of manholes that are off a little, but not drastically.
Well, and I agree with what you're saying, but the super elevation in the road, where it would be crowned towards the gutter?
Yeah.
These manholes are heading in the other direction. They're not graded towards the curbing, they're graded towards the center of the road.
Yeah. And we'll check the ones that we can identify. My sense tells me that sometimes what happens there, it's not that it should have been done that way, but the crew sometimes actually sets the structure to level so it doesn't match the road, and that's where you get the thing. I will check the ones that we know that we have a bump in, if you will.
Ed, do you know how many of those are like that?
No, I didn't count them.
Riding the road up and down tonight, I found a couple, but I didn't find very many.
There's one around the Bagnon School that I saw.
Yeah, and there's one further back before you get to the intersection, yeah.
Okay. Number three, between Ashcross Terrace and Tea Garden, water puddles on the road in the rain.
That's actually been addressed. That shouldn't be the case anymore. I hadn't yet got a chance to get out from last night's rain, but previous, after this note was sent out, we, our crew did go out and look at that situation.
I was there Sunday in the rain, and it was puddling. Maybe it was leaves, but there was a puddle there.
I'll have Brian look at it again, but he's had that on his list.
Okay.
Anybody have any comments on that? Good? Okay. Number four, used car dealership is complaining about the entrance not being wide enough. Is that?
It was not according to plan, and we wouldn't be the one to... It was not according to plan, and we wouldn't be the one to change that, so...
Is that state regulated, that entranceway? I don't know.
That was through the design engineer, so I don't know if it was, generally speaking, it's both state and town that has an input on the design criteria. But, it was designed and built according to plan.
Anybody have any comments on that? No? Number five, why is there a variation in height of the curbing from 3.5 to 7.25 inches?
On the 3.5, that should be at the situations where you have, like at the main intersection, wheelchair ramps at a very close proximity. And to make them ADA compliant, you bring the ramp up on one side. The adjacent ramp also has to come up, and if they're too close, you don't have enough space to bring them back up to full reveal. If I can maybe do just a sketch for you quickly, that if this were, say, the corner, and you had a ramp here, and a ramp here, in between, this curb is a transition curb coming up. But, if that space is relatively small, you only have enough space because you're limited to the amount of pitch you can put into a handicap ramp to make it ADA compliant.
Okay.
So, if the ramps are basically adjacent to other, you don't always have time to get back to your six-inch reveal before you dive down to the other side. There are a couple of locations we know, we identified, that were a little more than six inches. The ones I were aware of were done purposely because they were at catch basins at low points, which helps water collection. So, there is a slight variance in the curb, but again, if you look at the plan, there are areas where the 3.5 is a design, and at the catch basins that are at low points, we generally like to leave them recessed a little bit more to help drainage.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, I do.
Yep.
The 3.5 I was referring to was not in a transition, it was in a straight run.
Okay, where is it?
And same with the 7.25. What's the, what's the state recommend on that?
Usually generally six to seven inches.
Six to seven? Well, why on a straight run is it, with not, curbing not in a transition? It was one that I, a couple that I counted at 3.5.
I don't, I have to know where they are so I can look at it. If you send me the locations, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Anybody else? No? Number six, why does a guardrail in some spots go out beyond the curbing?
The only spot that I was aware of, at the, an area where we were putting the attenuators, the safety attenuators, the connection point was from a standard guardrail to this, and it, you don't bend the straight guardrail. And it was out, I believe, an inch over the curb, where it was discussed with the Super and Mass DOT with Mr. Eric Kalian, and he didn't seem to have an issue with it, so. If you could tell me any other point, I'd be happy to look at it, but that was the place that was identified to me.
Anybody have any remarks on that?
Yeah, I'm talking about the area would be heading into town from where the electric company is to about Valley Tree. That, and that's an area where the curbing is high, and it also, the curbing was out beyond the, the curbing was out beyond the, sorry, the guardrail was out beyond the curbing. And, in that area, and then also down further towards the Bagnall School, was the same thing. And I know what you're talking about, those rubber bumpers behind there, which is the, which is the next question on the sheet. And some of those rubber bumpers, the bolts were attached to it, but it wasn't attached to the guardrail itself.
And that was in the areas where the attenuators were.
That was in a straight run.
But, when there was attenuators attached, those bumpers are in the section where the attenuators were, right?
What are you talking about, the attenuators?
The attenuators of the collapsible section of guardrail for the safety barrier.
Is that that rubber bumper behind it?
Yeah.
Yeah, some of those weren't attached to the...
But, if you look at the, and we sent a copy of the design spec over to, again, Mr. Eric Kalian, and that's as per spec.
Anybody else?
Me. I'm sure you've talked to our road commissioner, my only thing is, do you think the snow will make it under there? I'm sure he has to worry about it more than anyone, but those guardrails are pretty low, and they're up against the curb, there's no real room to push that snow back, but it's, you know, again...
Well, and again, we...
It's not our headache.
Right, well, I'm not saying it's not ours, but we put the, set it as per plan, they use it, that same detail everywhere in the state.
So, usually maybe the snow will get underneath them.
It is a problem, and frankly, most roadways with the higher wingplows, the wingplows are designed to get the snow over the guardrail.
Take it up over it?
Yeah.
That was it for me on that one.
Anybody else? I think we covered the rubber bumpers on the number seven. Number eight, some of the advanced warning signs and crosswalk signs are blocked by tree branches. They are difficult to see now, but when the trees fill in next spring, they will be impossible to see.
Work on that's already started and should be completed this week.
Okay, anybody have questions on that?
No, ones being addressed.
Okay. Number nine, curbing behind the catch basins doesn't seem cut high enough for the water to drain properly in some spots. The heights do not appear level.
Well, again, I don't know any areas where the height of the curb behind the basins are at least six inches. And it says in a couple of cases, we actually set them a little lower. And level, if the basin is at the low point of the roadway, the curb would be set level. If the basin was set on a downgrade, it would not be set level, it would be set to the gutter grade of the curb. Again, if you have a specific location, you have an inch, you know, I'll be happy to look at it, but I think that the, I'm pretty sure the basins, the curb at the basins are at least minimal height, and as I said, if it's on the flat spot or down low spot, then it would be set level. If it's on a grade, it would follow the grade of the roadway.
What if I meet you up there tomorrow, and I'll point out some of these areas?
Tomorrow, unfortunately, later in the week, I'd be happy to do it. Tomorrow, I have two appointments, I wouldn't have time, I wouldn't wanna take 10 minutes and wanna...
Sunday morning.
Sunday morning?
That's later in the week. What's convenient for you?
Wednesday at some point, or Friday morning?
Wednesday at what time?
Let's say 12 o'clock.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on number nine? No? Number 10, how long are the work guaranteed for?
One year from final acceptance.
When's final acceptance due?
We anticipate it to be sometime around November 15th. We're on our punch list stage now, we hope to get cleaned up in about two weeks.
Got it.
And could I follow up to that? Who determines the final acceptance?
Mass DOT.
Okay, so...
And your town would all, the town highway department's also involved.
So, Bob would sign on, not on, not the board of selectmen, Bob would sign off on it? Anybody else? Number 11, how much work was done by A.R. Belly, and how much was subcontracted out?
It's approximately 50/50.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I have one other question I'd like to add, if possible.
And then, I wanted to add one other one, 'cause I've gotten a couple emails concerning, how does, huh? How does someone file a claim for damage, whether it's for the car or their personal property?
They can either file it through the state, or if they wanna contact our office directly.
'Cause one person, probably three weeks ago now, four weeks ago now, I did tell them through Denise to file a claim through the state, and they would go through the process, but they have not heard anything back.
Denise has our company contact information?
Yeah, so it was sent to you and Ray. Ray forwarded it to you and just said, "This is the process," so I don't know...
If you wanna resend it to me, 'cause I didn't see it, doesn't mean I must have dismissed it, but sometimes easier, depending on what the situation is for us to handle it directly, just saves one step.
Yeah.
It ends up coming through to us anyways.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want you to hand out your information over the TV, but if you could give it to Denise, and we can kind of forward it individually...
Yeah, I have this contact.
Okay. So, if we can, I'll send you that email again.
I have it, I forwarded off once, so I'll just reforward it.
Thank you. Lisa?
So, I'd like to understand a little bit more, because I'm sort of late in the process, but what role did the Groveland Highway Department play in the design and implementation of this project?
They had much more to do, I believe, at the design stage. They selected the designer company to do it. Once the project started, they were really just there to, you know, lend their assistance almost, but also just to be kept advised of the project progress. The project, once it got awarded, was administered by the Mass Department of Transportation.
So, in terms of oversight throughout that project, was there any responsibility of the town highway department?
No.
So, it's, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else want to add any questions?
Yep.
Don't go ahead, you asked questions.
What was it again?
What?
What was the question?
What question?
Oh, you charged my list here?
Yeah.
Okay. Center Street, pulling out of Center Street, again, it's probably a design flaw. You know the pole, the blinking light black pole? You actually gotta pull your car pretty far out in that lane to take a right or left to clear the view of that pole. I mean, I'm sure, I'm not gonna change it now, but I'm sure it's something that the state needs, it's gonna be a hazard. You have a blind spot right there with that big black pole. It should have been set back on the other side of the sidewalk, but for whatever reason, I truly think someone's gonna have a problem there. My other thing was, what was the reasoning, the reasoning when they put a piece of strapping across the driveways, and they hot top, when the plows are gonna go in those driveways, they're gonna rip those up? And the concrete, again, the concrete sidewalks are an inch higher than the road, and someone goes in there, that's all gonna be torn up come spring.
That was my number 12. Again, and I, the one-inch lip is the design, and that's to establish basically a gutter line running across...
Right, the water.
Again, that's the design, that's how the plan was built, I...
Right. So, what I'm saying to you, you being the contractor, and I'm not trying to come down here, 'cause I own my own business, too, that's gonna be a headache in the spring for you, unless you go back to the state and say to the state, "Listen, this is your design, this is gonna happen," 'cause I plow, and you're gonna get a plow hung up on those things, and they're gonna rip them, you know they're gonna, and it was a stupid design. Why don't they get an infrared machine and blend them in? You know what I mean, just blend them in? It doesn't make sense.
Again, and I, I'm all quill about design with you, and at some point, I don't mean to be cute about it, but we, as the contractors, say we don't design them, we just build them.
I got you.
That was the design, that was the detail on the plans, that's the way we built it.
Right.
I'm not saying you don't have a point, but it's used extensively, and that's what we did.
Okay. If you, when you're out looking...
Yep.
You got some hot topping between the old pavement and the new pavement, you got some pretty bumps. And I know that at one point, they came out and they put down some embalting and some stone dust, I don't know if it's gonna rip up come when the plows go up and over it in the wintertime, but there's some pretty, you can feel it, you know what I mean? I don't know if it's gonna be a problem or not, but I mean, that's what I noticed. And rarely, I mean, you're hydroseeding late, but I mean, hydroseed will come in in the spring if it's, if it stays for the winter, it will grow in the warm in the spring, so I'm sure that won't be a problem.
And if it has to be resprayed in the spring, it'll be resprayed.
Right, right. Down on, down at the other end of, where Salem Street and School Street, in that intersection by the Chinese Restaurant, is there any gonna be seeding on the far side of that at all? Or, it hasn't been addressed yet with loom or anything back in there?
If it's, again, I can't remember exactly the limit of the plan, but I would assume that if it was disturbed by our operations, it would be loomed and seeded.
Right.
That may be part of the punch list we're working on now.
Okay.
That I'd have to check with the Super. But, if we disturbed it in our operations, I'm sure it's gonna be addressed.
Okay. That's it, I think, for me.
Ed?
Well, he took most of my questions, he must have read my notes.
No, I think, you know...
Peaking over your shoulder.
No.
Just, I was gonna address the same thing about the, the driveways don't mesh with the, with the road pavement, and some of them do, some of them don't, this seems odd. But, no crosswalk at the Bagnall School, that seems strange. That, there's no crosswalk painted there at the Bagnall, entrance of the Bagnall School.
I had thought that paving, Mocking Sub had finished his work on last Friday, but I'll look into that, he did have to come back and do some things. I know there was wheelchair ramps installed at that location, so...
I'm sorry, there was what?
Wheelchair ramps, access ramps, so there should be a crosswalk if there's a wheelchair ramp, so...
I'm talking about across 97.
Oh, coming across the street?
Yeah.
I don't know, again, if it was on the plan to put it in, we would put it in? It wasn't, right? Yeah. I don't know why, 'cause at a school, but again, if we don't, we don't add them, if they're not there, we don't take them away if they're designed.
And, last question. When you, 97 is the junction of Center Street. There's a, there's a crosswalk set up there. It crosses, would probably be eastbound, maybe, if you're talking, well...
Okay. Yeah, Center's on that side of the street, yeah, okay.
Yeah, where the, where the crosswalk goes across, and you got a nice wheelchair ramp and a bit of a crosswalk. And then, it seems to end right at Center Street. Well, when you, when you make the corner onto Center Street from school, it seems like the, the curbing sticks out into Center Street. It would seem to have made sense to run the sidewalk a partway down, maybe even to the driveway, that first driveway, which is probably, what, 50 feet? Or more, a little more. Instead of ending it abruptly right there at Center, should've, when you go around that corner, it sticks out, so you, you got a small radius that you, that you need to negotiate. And I'm just wondering how that's gonna work out in the wintertime with plowing.
I'll pass, again, pass that one along, that sounds like a design question. I'm assuming that was done as per plan, we'll look at it to make sure it was, but I think there's something else that I can, I'd really have to pass along to the powers that be.
Are they gonna infrared the seam in the middle of the road?
No.
No? Okay. Okay? Yeah, that doesn't seem to mesh properly with the, call it, the east and westbound lanes. It seems to be a little ridge there.
Well, when you do paving, there is, there is an overlap off the seam, actually, a little, a little bit, but there's also a product that's put in to seal that joint. So, and over time, if you let the roadway work, this latex additive that they put in the mix when it gets hard to get next summer, some of this stuff evens out a little bit more. But, there's no plan to, that's, there's no plan to infrared that joint.
That's it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, Denise should send me that.
I just sent it to you.
And we'll see you Wednesday.
Wednesday noon time?
Yeah.
At the, I'll meet you at the office, okay?
Yeah, you know where the, did you use offices and the little plaza there?
I know where it is.
The Teagarden? You've got it?
No, I haven't been there, but I've been by it.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have the Wood Street Property Exchange. Vote to accept and sign exchange agreement and authorize legislative action.
So, if I may just speak on this?
Yep, you can try.
This was at our last meeting, and a couple of questions were brought up. I spoke with the DeHulu's, as well as their counsel regarding some of the figures that didn't seem to make sense. So, under Section 2, it talks about their initial down payment of $5,000. That is remaining the same. Under the second section of, I guess, Section 2A, it talked about, DeHulu shall not be obligated to provide funds in excess of $8,000. That has been changed to $12,000. And then that corresponds to section B that says, in the event legal expenses of the town are expected to exceed 12. So, they have okayed that, I spoke with Deana DeHulu today, even though we did not have a new signed copy, she is okay with that, they approve of that. As far as section 11, in speaking with our council, because they are costs that the town must pay to file our own property, it's our responsibility, however, it's under the caveat of section 2.1, the monies that they pay. So they're actually paying us, and then we in turn have to pay to file them, but we're not paying out of pocket for that money. So I hope that clarifies the issues that were brought up at the last meeting.
Yeah, I think I brought those questions up, and I'm, I'm satisfied that there'll, there'll be no cost of the town after the explanations. And I, thanks Mike for providing those.
Anybody have any comments on it?
No, I'd make a motion that we vote to accept and sign the exchange agreement and authorize a legislative action on the Wood Street Property Exchange.
You got a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Bill Yoskay? Bill Yoskay?
Good.
All right, are all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
So can I make a motion that we table this? Personnel by law discussion?
If you want to.
I'd like to make a-
Let me read it first, and then you can make a motion. So next up, we have personal by law discussion. Lisa, you have a comment?
I would make a motion that we table that to a future meeting.
Any particular timeframe, or just?
It's just, it's quarter of nine, and we still have to get through the rest of the stuff, so I don't want to be here until 10 o'clock. I don't know what about other people.
I'll second that.
Do we get a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
Thank you.
You missed the meetings when we were here till 11 o'clock at night.
I'm happy that anyways.
You missed meetings when I was there till 1:00 in the morning.
Not when you've got a 5:00 AM flight. All right, next up we have vote to the board, we have the minutes from October 2nd, 2017. Anybody get a chance to read those?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting, meeting minutes from October 2nd, excuse me, October, was it the 2nd? October 2nd.
Yes, we held those.
Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, Bill Dunn, you seconded that, right?
All those in favor?
Yes.
We have requests from the Road Commissioner to declare three items as surplus. 1988 Mack RD 600 dump truck, estimated at $7,000. 2001 Chevrolet Silverado pickup truck, estimated value at $200. 300 linear feet of turbidity barrier, estimated at value of $2,000.
So I just have a question about that. Once items are declared surplus, what happens to them?
So the board put a policy in place, last year or the year before, I don't recall. Excuse me. We do have a process, so first, once it's declared surplus, if it's under a certain threshold, and I apologize because I don't remember the dollar amount, might be under 1,000, we reach out to town departments first to see if anyone is interested in it. If not, and anything over that value automatically goes out to bid on munisabid, it's a municipal auction site, where we put our items up, we can set a minimum bid, so I would ask for you all to vote if you want to use a minimum bid, especially for the Mack truck and the turbidity barrier. And then they collect bids, and the highest bidder is already qualified through their company, and then we just make an exchange for the item.
So we, we don't have to put a minimum bid, but we don't have to accept a bid either, right?
Correct, we can, we can deny or reject a bid, and we do not need a minimum bid. So it's up to you all if you'd like to-
Do we have to vote on the surplus first, and then, or do we make it as part of one motion?
I think you could probably do either, if you'd like to do the surplus first and then discuss the items individually.
Surplus, and then we can vote on whether or not we want minimum bid or not.
Sure, that would be fine.
So I make a motion that we accept the request from the Road Commissioner, Commissioner to declare three items as surplus, the 1988 Mack RD 600 dump truck, the 2001 Chevrolet Silverado pickup truck, and the 300 linear feet of turbidity barrier.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I would like to just make sure that we put it out to a minimum bid.
That's the next motion.
Okay, all right.
So no further discussion?
No further discussion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Now you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we put it out to minimum bid.
All right, so if you start with a Mack, the 1988 Mack, what would you all like to use as a minimum bid for that?
I'd like to use 7,000.
We can do it, I mean, I-
Yeah, you can set anything you want as a minimum.
Yeah.
The most difficult part I find, Mr. Chair, is I don't have anybody here to tell me what kind of shape that truck is in. He estimates the value of $7,000. Do we really expect on, on getting $7,000? Are we being unrealistic? Is this, is this kind, some kind of Kelley Blue Book value, or is this-
Bill, do you know roughly?
Yeah, the truck is worth almost $7,000, I know the truck.
He said he probably would, we would probably get more than that for this truck, is what he told me.
I don't know, so I'll take him, Bill.
I know, I know the truck.
Yeah, okay.
And I know what Mack trucks that year go for.
I'll take your word for it, that's why, I, I don't know, it is, it's definitely outside of my area of expertise.
Yeah, that's fine, no, definitely.
All right, so we have a motion.
Could I just ask one question? So you feel that way on each of the items?
I, I value the, I, I think the 2001 Silverado, I don't know if that's Bob's truck.
It is his truck.
It's junk.
So it is junk. I wouldn't even recommend putting that out to bid, but it's up to you.
That's Bobby, that's Bob's truck?
It is his truck, yes.
And then the 300 linear-
200 dollars.
You think that's 2,000 minimum?
He's generous, it's not worth 200 dollars.
I agree, I don't think it's worth 200 dollars.
That truck's not worth 200 dollars.
But we need to drive that truck to and from his house and-
You can scrap the truck for 400 dollars.
No, he has full right to take that as a, wherever he goes, he can use that truck.
So do we want to just- Do you want to, do you want to just make a motion to put the minimum bid as listed at the Miracle Valley here? Is that easier?
For conversation real quick, you can take, if that truck drives into the scrapyard, they'll give you between 200 and 400 dollars for it.
Taking the frames in mind.
So, do we have a second on the?
So, the motion is to use the minimum value on the dump truck and the turbidity barrier, correct?
Yeah, and it-
I think on the pickup truck too.
Oh, on the pickup truck also? Okay.
But just for clarification, I will most likely not put the pickup truck on munisabid for 200 dollars, I just don't think it's worth that.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, if you told the highway guys to drive it to the scrapyard, they'll give them 200 to 400 dollars.
Or no, I'm just clarifying for the board that that will not go out for auction-
Okay.
At 200 dollar value, because I don't think we could certify-
Something we can do with it to try to get somebody for it.
Yeah.
Is that a motion? Is that your motion? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. I think we had enough discussion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so can I just clarify? So was it Lisa or Bill who made the actual motion?
I think it was Bill.
I think Bill made the motion.
I clarified the language, but it was Bill's motion.
Bill's second.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm confused.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Next up, we have one day liquor license for a family birthday party at V C Park on November 25th, 2017, between the hours of 1:00 PM and 5:00 PM.
That was added today, I sent that with the final, just want to look at it.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
So, this begs the question, do they need a detailed officer?
Yes, and it's right on their permit. So anything with alcohol, we do normally require a detailed officer, so yes, one would be required.
And they submitted all the paperwork, do you need it?
Yes.
Okay.
How many people?
They expect... You should tell me how many people.
Oh, 100, 70 to 100.
Yes, 70 to 100.
That's a heck of a birthday.
Do we get invited to that? No?
We'll have to see what we can do.
I'm sure you could get yourself an invite.
Anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to accept the one day family birthday party at V C Park, November 25th, 2000, between the hours of 1:00 and 5:00.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Moving on to old business, Ed, we'll start with you.
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Bill Dunn?
Yeah, I would like to say thank you on, on behalf of the Pumpkin Fest, I would like to name off a couple of quick names. I'd like to thank Mrs. Stewart for her donation of the cider and goodies. Deb Stewart for her time and her donation. I'd like to say a special thanks to Sleckman Watson for his tractor and his tractor rides. I would like to say thank you to Heavenly Donuts for their donation, Inglewood Palm for their donation, Denise Dombrowski for her time and her energy to help set it up. I would like to thank the police, the fire, the library, the water department, and all the people that come out with their families that evening, and also people that dropped off pumpkins for that evening. It was a great time, it actually has grown, we had quite a bit of people out there. Charlie was there with the camera, thank you Charlie. And, yeah. Our parade director.
Tracy.
Tracy, our parade director was there.
No, he was a photographer.
Yeah, he was a photographer too. So anyway, again, thank you everyone, it was a great turnout, and hopefully next year we can do it bigger and better. And it's good to get the town people involved and do fun things like that, I think everyone that came that I saw had a great time, and it was a good turnout.
Is that it?
Under old business?
Yep.
I would like to ask if we have anywhere down the pipeline for an executive session on the Salem Street land sales.
It's the same thing, trying to get you all together for an executive session. So if you guys can come up with dates, I'll schedule.
Okay.
But that's been the issue, is-
Will they hang on till we do this?
Yes, and they are still very interested, I, I touch base with Deana quite regularly on it.
Let's try to see what- Drop another email to everybody? Well, at least before Thanksgiving, let's try and see if we can get something scheduled for that.
Is 5:30 not an option? Is the 5:30 time on the day of, like, the next meeting, that is not an option?
I don't know if on a regular basis it is or not. And I do think for this specific issue, I can't see it taking more than an hour. So if you wanted to do this, 5:30 on November 13th.
Oh, excuse me, the 13th. So 5:30 on the 13th.
If that works for everybody.
Ed, does that work for you?
Oh, I'm sorry, what was the date again?
November 13th.
It's the date of the next meeting.
It's the next election meeting?
That's, that's fine.
Bill?
Yep.
Good for me, Lisa. Bill?
Okay, so that should, I mean, that shouldn't take a lot of time to get that one.
5:30 on the 13th before our next meeting.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
You'll send that a reminder?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Lisa, did you have anything under old business?
No, I did not.
Ed, Bill O'Neil?
Oh, my turn. Town planner, where were we, where we last left off? We had thrown it out on the street again. Have we got any new applicants? How's that going?
Yes, so we had one. Sam and I interviewed him, and he did not have a lot of hands-on experience. All of his answers were, we've done this, we've done that. When we tried to drill down, he was just a member of a group handling certain tasks, so we didn't feel that he was really right for the position. That's the only one we've received, other than the gentleman who you interviewed before that was still expressing an interest.
So still looking?
So it's still posted, it has ran its course on the Mass Municipal website. I will post it again in a few months, it cost us about $195 to post on there. But that is the site that gets the most activity. We actually, I used, reached out to Merrimack Valley Planning, and it was sent out to the entire Massachusetts Municipal Planning listserv. We had nobody bite at that, so.
Now, the Mass Unemployment website, does that typically, that's free, right? We can advertise jobs on that?
Yes, we certainly can, I mean, they are changing, you know, indeed.com is now, costs you to advertise, that's not free anymore, so some of the avenues we would take. Mass Unemployment, we certainly can, but I think it's more specialized, I don't really know if there's, if how many people are going to reach that have the skills for this position. We can try it, I can certainly add that to the list.
It's free, it's for me. Bagnell Fields, I remember we were talking about pesticides and fertilizers agreement with the school district and making sure, is that all, that is all squared away?
Yep.
And any movement on the grounds maintenance committee, the ones that was, Mr. Day had really kind of wanted to start, but really kind of felt in an awkward position. Any been, any movement on that to assemble some kind of committee?
I don't know if Mike wants to speak, but I can just say, so to my knowledge, no. But I will say that we hired the landscapers that are actually actively just, they'll go out there, they're monitoring it. The highway's cutting it about every two weeks because of the blade length, that's what was recommended by the landscapers. They did fertilize, that they have a plan to seed it. Honestly, I don't know what more we would need from grounds, a grounds group, when we have an active landscaper going out there and reporting back what needs to happen, but-
Well, this is more funding of the upkeep and the maintenance and the ongoing.
It's going to need mulch in the spring.
Yes, so we do, we do have money in the Bagnell account that we've paid for this year, and then I think, given the, it was $20, $200 or something like that for the year, I think using funds from the summer program, some of the excess funds on an annual basis, in my opinion, would cover all the costs, unless there's like a larger capital item we wanted to do there. I think the annual maintenance could be easily covered without costing anything extra for the summer program, just using their excess funds.
Yeah, and Karen, Karen LeBelle and her group said they'd be happy to volunteer to do extra stuff around the school if we needed it, or if they just wanted to volunteer.
I know that Mr. Day had talked about formulating a formal committee, but now it's more loosey-goosey.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Is an added service to the, and this reminds me, because it's, it's, it's leaf peeper season, and based on what happened last night, is there any plans or is any possibility to entertain and maybe an added service of a leaf pickup? I know we have, we can call if, if we have an additional pickup, like a large item. But is there any maybe kind of added service we could give to the public for a leaf pickup, maybe once or twice a year at the homeowner's cost? Because everybody wouldn't do it, I'm just thinking, there's, there's a lot of elderly folks out there, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty able-bodied, so it doesn't really bother me. But there's a lot of elderly folks out there that, you know, the leaves in, in the spring and in the fall, trying to get them over to the compost is not always the easiest thing in the world. If we, if they could bag them and leave them on the curb, and they knew once or twice a year they could be picked up for, you know, $10 or $20 for so many bags, I think it might be, you know, helpful.
Yeah, I think the problem with that, though, is it would have to be us that does it, because that's not part of our trash contract, they don't pick up yard waste. So we would have to find a way to do that within the town. Services and equipment and budget.
But they pick up large items, you just pick up the phone and call them, and it's not on the, it's not on the, the towns dole.
But there's a separate white goods, there's a separate schedule that talks about what they'll pick up. Yard waste is not an item that they pick up.
But they do in other towns, maybe not waste management, but you can see as you drive around the other towns and cities, they'll put, you know-
The brown bags?
The brown bags. And, you know, periodically, they're picked up, they don't have to run them to the dump or the compost pile. So I know somebody's doing it, I imagine they have that service, I imagine there's a cost, and I'm not saying that the town should pick it up.
I mean, I can check with waste management.
Make available to the residents, especially the folks that don't have the opportunity or the means to, to get that kind of stuff picked up and, and get to the compost pile.
Yeah, I can certainly call and see if they have any services like that here. You know, possibly if it's something to schedule. I know the issue with the white goods is they don't have the manpower, which is why you need to schedule it. So maybe they have the same type of service, I can certainly ask them, I just know it's not in our current contract, so.
Right.
Yeah, I can ask them.
Doesn't hurt. The electric department, how's their move going? Do we really?
The elec, you mean the water department?
The water department, my bad.
So they are working on the building. They are planning to make some significant changes down there. For those of you that had a tour inside the building, it's pretty rundown. They want to do some changes to the roof line, some exterior changes, and then they have to do all-new electrical and wiring and heating and... So they are in that phase, they recently hired an architect to do some drawings for them. So now they're not looking until like the spring to move.
The spring, so-
If, if then.
So any plans to reallocate the existing office space will be put off till spring?
My guess is spring or next fiscal year, I'm not sure if the funds the water department has will be enough to do the renovations they need before next fiscal year.
Okay. Plans to recoup some of the insurance increase at V C Park? We formulated or thought about any kind of plan here to mitigate some of these extraordinary costs that we now incur?
So Mike and I met, we talked about the cost. The hope would be that V Z could pick up a couple of the monthly payments that are now required. It's unknown at this point if they'll have that money, they're sort of waiting to see, but that's the hope, is by the end of the fiscal year, as it gets closer to, you know, a town meeting or special town meeting where we will need to transfer money for that, that they will have the ability to cover some of those monthly payments.
More parties, Mike, Mike, more parties. And one last item, the, well, maybe it's two, but they're connected, the seventh member of the Elm Park Committee, have we solicited?
It's still on our website, but I have not had anyone.
Okay, on the website, now, when we were talking about public comments last week, it, it was viewed as a possible hindrance for a written submission, because there may be some people that are illiterate. Should we also consider that same factor with this committee, that there might be some people that really want to be involved in that committee but are illiterate and not able to go onto the website and, and put that stuff on there?
And they can call the office at any time.
Yeah, so I think maybe that should be, if you're unable to submit something, writing.
Yeah, I can certainly add that. Yeah, they can call at any time. People come in here and will ask to be part of a committee. I give them a piece of notebook paper and just have them, you know, state what committee and sign it and, so yeah, anything like that is possible. So I can just add that to that posting.
That'd be great.
I can add that to all the postings.
What's that?
Yeah, thank you.
Lisa, did you want to add something?
So I just wanted to add that I had reached out to Mike this week about, I had heard that there was going to be a bridge dedication over at the Bates Bridge. So I had reached out to AJ at Senator Tar's office and he said that he was going to be reaching out to us this week.
Okay.
That it's not a sort of new dedication, but apparently because they put up the new signs, they want to have a formal dedication.
Are the new signs already up?
That's what he said.
Yeah.
Oh, they are?
At both ends.
Okay.
It was one, only one on one end, now they're on both ends.
Yeah, they were supposed to notify us when they did that and we haven't.
Did it say Bates or did it say veterans? It said, only made Bates, Veterans Memorial Bridge.
Yeah, that's what they were adding.
So he was saying there was no new name, it was those two names, but they're, yeah, they're looking to have.
Veterans Memorial.
Yeah, they're just looking.
I guess, listen to that, proved dead at one point, but they, I didn't know that they actually did it though.
Yeah, it's up there. For a while, one side didn't have any, but now it does.
He said it was a legislative thing that happened. But, but what he said is that he'd be reaching out to this board through Denise, once they establish a date to invite this board and I guess Havel as well.
To the dedication ceremony?
Mm-hmm.
Did they give you an idea of when it is or no, that just they'll be reaching out?
It'd be in February when it's minus 20.
Well, they were hoping to do it in November, but I guess they're trying to coordinate it with Lieutenant Governor as well.
Okay. I'll let you know as soon as I get an email from them.
Yeah, I want to add one thing. I only had one thing. We've been asked to give a speech or a talk at the Veterans Day Ceremony. I'm happy to write something. I actually like doing that, but I've done the last three or four events, so if somebody else wants to take that and go ahead and do a speech for that event, then I'm happy to step aside.
It is November 11th, which is a Saturday at 10:30 AM on the town hall.
You want me to do it?
You're a better speaker than I am.
I'm fine, I'm fine with you doing it if others.
I like doing it, so. Bill? And then Bill has another one, we'll just keep going back and forth until.
Just one more item on the, on the old business, direct committee follow-up. I know we reached out to them and they came in here.
Mike's coming in next week, my co, next, next meeting, November 13th. Also on that meeting is the summer program recap. They're both on the same night.
Awesome.
Bill? Okay, real quick. Anything going on with the hot top at the Bagnell?
Yes, they're planning to do that when they work on, I think we talked about it the last meeting. They're going to do some work for the light department in their parking lot, so when they come out to pay for that, they're going to pave the Bagnell. We just have to time it because most likely it'll be during the week, so we have to work with the school to just deal with that.
And the last thing is, did you talk to the road commissioner about the bathrooms at all, any movement on that?
I did, so I actually emailed him and asked him for an update or if he could come in for an update. I'll be honest with you, he came in today and said, we've been working since 11 o'clock last night. I know I need to get this to you, it's just not going to happen today. So they, they were out all night dealing with the trees and last week was the paving. So I think now the paving is done. He should be in the office more, aside from this crazy storm we had last night.
What's that? Quickly through correspondence, we have minutes from October 16th, 2017. We have KP Law's response to the October 5th, 2017 open meeting law complaint from Kathleen Prunier, asked prepared and submitted to the Attorney General's Division of Open Government. And now we're on to find this director's time.
And I don't have anything new. You guys covered everything. I would just like to thank Bill and Teresa Dunn for all your help with the Pumpkin Fest. I really do think it was a great night. Everyone that showed up, all the kids seemed to have a good time. We ran out of food, we ran out of goodie bags, so we ran out of, I was actually trampled for musical instruments, so it was, it was actually a lot of fun. So thank you to everyone that came out and we hope to improve upon it year after year and just keep making it bigger.
And what time's trick or treat tomorrow? 5:30 to 7:30?
5:30 to 7:30. And to my knowledge, there is no, I was just reading, a lot of towns have postponed it given the storms. I have not seen anything here, so as far as I know, trick or treating is still on for tomorrow night.
Moving on to selectman time, Ed, we'll start with you.
I don't have anything.
Bill?
The only thing I was going to say is, kind of touching on what Denise just said, is I'd like to thank the fire, the police and the highway. I know last night they were out to their limits and I know they're all getting paid, but they were, the storms came through and they were pretty busy, so I'd like to say thank you to them.
Can I add electric company to that too?
Oh, the electric company, well, you could have. Yep, perfect.
Lisa?
I don't have anything. I guess one suggestion that I would have is, since we weren't able to do the executive session today and we won't do it the next time, maybe we can try to plan for the next Monday evening meeting to do that executive session. Not, not the 13th, but the one that follows that, to try and do that 5:30 executive session.
November 27th?
If that's viable.
I don't have a problem with it, but the issue on hand, I'd like to clean the issue up that's on hand before we get into negotiations.
So that's about a month away?
So I'll talk to you, Bill, and then I'll talk to Mike and we can, if that's, so as long as that works for everybody, you can tentatively hold the November 27th date and then I'll talk to you about posting it.
Yeah.
So I'll put that as a.
Yeah, speaking of Halloween, it is Halloween tomorrow night. Please, folks, use some common sense when you're driving down the streets. For lack of a better word, I encountered more than one idiot last Halloween, flying down streets, dark streets with wet leaves and a lot of little kids. Contrary to popular belief, little children aren't on leashes. That's what we keep our pets on. They have a mind of their own. You can be holding their hand and if they see a bunch of kids across the street with candy yelling, they're apt to run across the street themselves. So please, please, last thing you want to do, believe me, is hit a little child. So please, use some discretion, use some common sense. If the sign on the street says 25, do yourself a favor, go 20. Don't, don't, don't cause yourself and someone else a lot of pain by being ignorant. Second thing I'd, I'd like to see if we could get added to the agenda sometime, Mr. Chair, is this, there's probably more than one elected position in this town that really needs to be looked at and changed to probably an appointed position. I'd like to explore the possibilities of changing some of these so that the folks in key positions in this town are accountable to someone every minute of every day and not just once every election cycle.
May I comment on that? So just so you're aware, the finance committee has actively been pursuing this and they have selected the road commissioner position to start with. They are planning to submit to you all an article for the spring town meeting and the spring election to change that position from elected to appointed.
That's.
So they are actively, that is one of the goals that they are working on.
That's a great start. Several others.
Can we have the conversation about other positions?
Oh, yeah, you certainly can. They just chose that.
Do you want to have it for an agenda item down the road?
I don't think it's a personnel meeting issue.
I think it, it's about accountability is what it comes down to. It's not about personal bylaws or.
But if they're appointed, they become personnel. That's just what I thought you meant to be able to put it under that honors.